Thank you. We'll start the meeting. We'll open up with the prayer. Today, as we open this session, as the session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction, which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your special blessing for all those who work to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and truly public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Nine present.
We have a couple of memorials tonight. Counselor Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask for a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Newton Arcasian Jr. Newton Robert Arcasian, better known as Nudi, of Boynton Beach, Florida, formerly of Chinsford, in Lowell, passed away Sunday, November 29, 2020, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of Janet Kay Stetson Arcasian, with whom he shared five glorious years of marriage. He was born December 4, 1940, in Lowell, a son of the Lady Anna Cassidy and Newton Arcasian Sr., graduated from Keith Academy in Lowell, and then went on to serve in the Coast Guard. He later became a well-known hairstylist and owner of Newton's Hair Salon in Lowell. He was also the owner and educator of the Lowell Academy Hairstyling Institute, where he was a mentor to all. Nudi participated in and won many state and national styling competitions over the years before retiring in 2011. Nudi was a proud lifelong member of the Lowell Elks. He was also an avid tennis player, having won many tournaments plus awards in men's leagues. He enjoyed a good game of golf with his jumps. Some of his favorite hobbies were playing cribbage with his wife and drawing and painting. He especially liked spending time with his wife, children, and grandchildren. Nudi was a very positive man and was kind and generous to all who knew him. He was one of the best to ever place anyone judgment on anyone. He would always be known for his kindness, beauty, and generosity. In addition to his loving wife, Nudi leaves behind his children, Donna Arcasian and her husband, Shaq O'Kelly Preston, and her husband Edmund of Drakehead and his son Newton Robert Arcasian III and his loving partner, Steff Yott of Chester, New Hampshire. Six grandchildren, his brother Bruce Arcasian and his wife Kathleen of Lowell, and his sister Barbara Hattick of Woolman, his nephews Brian and Brendan Arcasian, and niece Carrie Arcasian. He also leaves behind several other nieces and nephews and many friends. He was also predeceased by his beloved first wife, Charlotte Leggencook Arcasian, who passed away in 2012, and his dear brother-in-law Leon Hattick. The Arcasian families to thank, the staff at University of Miami Hospital in Miami, Florida, for their professional, personal, loving care until Nudi's passing. May his soul rest in peace. And Mr. Mayor, I would also like to ask for a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Reverend William McSweeney, OMI. Reverend William May 21, Son of the Lady, and Beethany Hammond, six brothers John and his sister Rosalyn Sullivan. Reverend McSweeney of St. Clement High School in Sumter. He received a degree in philosophy from the Ullwray College, Washington DC, and a master's degree in theology and education from Catholic University of America in Washington DC. On September 7, 1945, Reverend McSweeney entered the Ullwray Noviciate in Tookspring, where he made his first vows on September 8, 1946. He professed his perpetual vows in Essex, New York, on September 8, 1949. His ordination for the priesthood took place on June 2, 1952, in Washington DC. From 1952 to 19
Sorry to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt, Counselor Conway. You're kind of breaking up, just so you know. So, continue. Yep.
He was assigned to St. Williams Parish in Tookspring, Mass., Holy Angels Parish, Buffalo, New York, MacLaconception Parish, Lowell Mass., St. Anne Parish in Sumter, South Carolina, and St. Francis of Assisi Parish in Florida. During the time, he was appointed the Director of Communications and Missions at the Ullwray Provincial House in Boston, Mass. In 2002, he was appointed Superior and Director of the Ullwray Community in Washington DC. He was the Director of the St. Joseph's, the work of shrine in Lowell, Mass. from 2003 to 2006, and in 2006, he was appointed Superior of the community at the residence in Tookspring. Transitioned into retirement, Father McSweeney remained at the Immaculate Heart of Mary Residence, where he resided until his passing. In addition to his Ullwray family, Father McSweeney is survived by nieces, nephews, including Mary Mallett, Claire Faletti, John Sullivan, and Kevin McSweeney. Father is also survived by many grandnieces, grandnephews, and great-great-grandnieces and nephews. Father McSweeney will always be missed by his many parishioners he served over the years. Father McSweeney will always be known as a true gentleman who had a kind word for everyone. May his soul rest in peace. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other memorials? Time? We'll docken the chambers for a moment of silence.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Mercia?
I'm sorry to butt in and bother anybody, but when I listened to Counselor Conway do the moment of silence in darkened chamber for those two individuals, what he had to say was very, very important, but it broke up so bad that I'm hearing, and I could say a point of information, that people are telling me left and right, they don't watch the council meeting anymore because it's frustrating, and it was frustrating watching Counselor Conway do a wonderful eulogy and to only have it broken up and to the point where it was a little bit frustrating. So, I don't know how you could get around that. I don't know if it's the Zoom problem, but just so that you know, people aren't watching this council meeting anymore. Thank you. Sorry, but I had to tell the truth.
No, I understand. And they tell me that it could be the internet connection on his end. It could be the internet connection on our end. There's no real answer yet, so... But I understand what you're saying. Thank you. Mayor's business, communication, remote, and Zoom participation need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Next, we have recognition of Invisaware. I'm going to turn it over to Christine McCall. She's been working with them, her and her team, and they're doing a great job. And I'll leave it to Christine McCall to introduce Invisaware. Christine, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the rest of the City Council. I'm excited to introduce you to Rajah, one of the co-founders of Invisaware. Invisaware produces a line of smart jewelry and accessories that are Bluetooth-enabled. When pressed twice, they send a message alert to up to five close family and friends as well as able to contact 911. We invited Invisaware here tonight to recognize a recent award that this company received from Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Innovation Network. This is a very prestigious award that recognizes, supports, and publicizes groundbreaking solutions and pioneering advancements that shape tomorrow's economy. And I just wanted to let the council know that Invisaware is such a prime example and success story of two recent UMass Lowell graduates who took full advantage of the resources available to early entrepreneurs here in Lowell. And so, I'm excited to introduce you to Rajah, and she can say hello to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rajah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was just saying some wonderful things about Christine and saying that it's so kind of her for that great introduction. Thank you so much for inviting me to come speak with you today. Like Christine said, my name is Rajah Abdulziz. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Invisaware. Thank you to the mayor as well. I heard him a little bit earlier. But we're so honored to be growing in the wonderful city of Lowell. We make jewelry and accessories, like the bracelet I'm wearing. They all have a button hidden on the backside. Two clicks immediately text five people to let them know you need help. It shares your location, and it can also optionally contact 911. But never meant to start a company. I actually went into UMass Lowell, and I started it completely by accident while I was in college. I was actually the president of the Society of Women Engineers chapter. And myself and the ladies in the organization would always feel uncomfortable walking outside late at night. And I say late at night, but what I mean is like 6:00, 7:00 PM. It gets so dark out so early these days. And you hear too many things that are scary on the news, so it's pretty typical to feel uncomfortable. And I was looking for a safety device after a scary situation I had where I was followed. And everything on the market was a big ugly panic button. It didn't really make sense to me why nobody was creating safety devices that were visually appealing. I thought to myself, if my grandmother, who's in her 80s, refuses to wear one of those ugly panic buttons, why are all of these companies marketing them to young women my age? And so, I ended up starting the company. I worked on it with a friend in college. His name is Ray Hamilton. He actually wanted to be here today, but we've been super busy. So, he's actually downstairs assisting our team with shipping orders. But it's been a super exciting few years for us. We've raised millions of dollars in funding, and tomorrow we're going to be announcing a major partnership with one of the top security companies in the country, which is going to be a major milestone for us. And we're so honored to be growing in the city of Lowell and can't thank you enough for all of your support. We truly would not be where we are today if we hadn't received our first $100,000 loan from the Lowell Development Financial Corporation or if we hadn't attended amazing accelerators like E-for-all. So, thank you again, and I'm excited to be here and to share with you my story. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well, if you have them.
Thank you. It's a great story, and we're glad that you stayed here in Lowell and you graduated in Lowell and started the business. And it just shows what, you know, what you can do here in Lowell. So, we appreciate that you took advantage of every opportunity that you could. So, any...
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And this is where we plan to be for the next 100 years, hopefully.
Thank you. Good luck with everything. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Sure. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you very much and congratulations because I love to see young people have a beautiful idea and set that plan and become business people in the city of Lowell. Let me ask you, can you tell us your address? Because I don't know that I heard that.
Absolutely. We're on Stedman Street, right by Drumhead Plaza.
Okay.
We have a 3,000-square-foot facility here.
And you're open. What are your hours?
So, it's actually just our corporate headquarters. We don't yet have a store, but hopefully one day we will.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you very much and good luck and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
You can shop Invisaware products on their website. They have a lot of different options.
Yes, thank you, Christine. The website is just invisaware.com.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Raj.
Thank you.
Next, we have city clerk portion. Oh, all right. Thank you. City clerk. Minutes of the City Council Regular Meeting, November 24, for acceptance and a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Rock, seconded by Counselor Noon. Let's see. Close enough? We're going to get right into the public hearings. It's close enough. So, we're going to start with 4-1 ordinance to amend zoning. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council, in ordinance to amend the code of City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled "Zoning" by extending existing suburban neighborhood multifamily SMF zoning district to include in the areas of Rivers Edge Road in Lowell. Now, by opening the hearing to people in favor... Is Attorney Kevin Murphy on the line? Yes, you're all set, Kevin?
Yes, right there. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for continuing this hearing from its original date until today because that allowed us to provide additional information to the planning board in order for us to get a more positive recommendation relative to this zoning change. First of all, what this is, this is the final phase of the reinvention of the Julian Steel Project. What we are trying to do is to finish the project within our economic capabilities. Unfortunately, based upon the original plan of 180 units, which means we have probably another 26 or 27 units that we're allowed to build, we cannot do that economically. So, we need to increase the amount of units that will allow us to complete this project in a economic fashion that's good for everybody. We haven't arrived at that figure yet. We are still doing the economic analysis, and we're still doing the internal debate within the Lowell Housing Authority Board of Directors to see how much density we want to increase at the Julian Steel Project. But what we're asking to do is to change the zoning, to extend that zoning area to the, to the left of us so that we can increase the amount of units that we're allowed to build at the Julian Steel Project. In all fairness to the planning board, at our first meeting, we really didn't give them a lot of information that they could wrap their arms around and make a reasonable decision whether we should have a rezoning of this area. But thanks to you extending this for about 30 days, our engineers were able to come up with a conceptual plan that we presented to the planning department and the planning board to show them what we wanted to do in this area. And basically, it's a condominium development of duplexes that would finish the project. And I can say that after last night's meeting, the board voted that after us presenting this additional information, that they were more amenable to the zoning change after the information. Now, I must give a caveat, is that we did present a conceptual plan to the planning board, and I must say that that is conceptual because the plan we presented was 26 or 25 duplex units totaling 50 units. That plan, I think, is too dense. I think after we do our economic analysis and after we do our internal debate in the Housing Authority, is that we're going to reduce those amounts, probably down closer to 40. But the good thing about this plan is that the enabling statute of the reinvention of the Julian Steel Project said that any substantial change to that initial plan had to be approved by not only the Lowell Housing Authority Board of Directors, but it has to be approved by the Lowell City Council, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and within the City of Lowell zoning bylaws, it has to be approved by the planning board. So, what we're asking is that you allow us to change the zoning so that we can increase the amount of units that we're going to build at the Julian Steel Project. But with a caveat, that you still have the veto opportunity in the future, is that you have the opportunity to approve or disapprove any plan that we bring to you. any plan that we bring to you relative to the amount of units. So there's a great protection for everybody here. I think it's good for the Housing Authority. I think it's good for the city of Lowell, because we're trying to increase affordable housing within the city of Lowell. But at the same time, it is going to be within the parameters that the Lowell City Council thinks is fair and reasonable at the Julian Steel project. We have our consultants with us here this evening if you have any questions. But that's basically the classic illustrated version of what we're planning to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else speaking in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Questions from the body? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Attorney Murphy, for that explanation. When I did see the conceptual drawing, I concur that I thought 50 units was a little bit too dense in that area. I'd like to see this. I was here when we voted for it, and I think that property has been transitioned from what it once was to what I think is a very successful and a beautiful development. You know, Diane Silver and the board, along with the Housing Authority, I think have made great progress and have provided wonderful opportunities for new first-time homeowners that wouldn't have ever dreamt of being able to buy a home. It's homeownership, which I feel is imperative, and it works. So I'm going to support this. It was also good to hear, and I did see in the communication from the planning board, that it does go to site plan review. So under the present zoning, can I just? My question is this, I'm sorry, Attorney Murphy. You, under the current zoning, you can add an additional 27 units, but that's not going to provide the economic stability you need to finish the project? So you're looking at essentially an additional 15 or 13?
Right. Well, we can't do it with the original 26 or 27 units, but we can do it with more. I'm going to represent to you, Counselor Elliott and the rest of the City Council, that I agree with you, 50 is far too many units. And that's not going to be the final version that was drafted by our engineers. I think when we come back to you, it's going to be closer to 40 units, somewhere around there. So I can't certify exactly, but 50, I think, I agree with you, is far too many.
Sure.
I think the Housing Authority Board of Directors agrees with you. And we're going to come back with a final plan that you have to approve that I think will be much less than the 50.
Okay, good. I'm going to support this. I think the development has been nothing less than spectacular. It really is a wonderful development. Again, I don't want to repeat myself, but homeownership opportunities never would have existed, and the transformation of this site is second to none. So I appreciate you coming back and addressing the density. But I want to see this project succeed. And the compromise that you put forward brings us a long way to meeting that goal. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Attorney.
Counselor Mercia, and then Counselor Noon?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Attorney Murphy, I just want to say that when this proposal first came before us to change the zoning, and I read through it, and it seemed like the project would have made it too overcrowded. But the fact is, they suggested that we don't dismiss it and just reject it and forget about it. So it was well worth the effort to just put this off into a delay so that you could go back to the table and negotiate where you were. And I can clearly see that this has happened. The planning board is supportive of the construction quality, the affordability of the housing in the city, which we so richly need, no doubt about that. And it is a project that is so beautiful. The way that it was before compared to the way it is now is like night and day. So their motion on the planning board passed unanimously, five to nothing. I can think of no other reason but to support it. And thank you for doing exactly what the planning board thought would be in the best interest of the city. So thank you very much, Attorney Murphy.
Thank you, Counselor. And like I say, any plan that we finally arrive at has to come back to you for its approval. So I think that's a good way to handle this whole situation.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good project. Certainly, it helped, you know, our affordable housing stock that we need most. And, you know, more than that is that, you know, it's been endorsed by the planning board. So any plans that, you know, Attorney Murphy is going to have in the future will come before not only the planning board, but also the City Council for approval. So I think we need this, and I thank the Lowell Housing Authority, you know, for their partnership and for continuing to provide affordable housing for the city's housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this project's a good one. I know there's been multiple motions filed on housing within the city, affordable as well. And I think this project here hits those spots. You know, the planning boards watching the meeting last night and their approval as well. And this is something that, as a city, we want families to move to Lowell or to keep families from moving out of Lowell. Projects like this are nothing but positive. So look forward to supporting it and all the best going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Samaras, did you have your hand up?
I'm all set.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be remiss if I don't express my support for Attorney Murphy and the Lowell Housing Authority project and development. I concur with Counselor Elliott mentioned earlier. You know, owning a home is really the American dream. And I really appreciate your effort, Attorney, and the Lowell Housing Authority. You have to jump through a lot of hoops to get the development approved, not just by the City Council, but by the DHCD, the planning board, and so forth. And I really appreciate the care that you put into this, keeping us updated. And leave it open also, just in case some plan, you know, with any development, there likely to be some change in plan along the way, and you want to bring it back to the council for us to review again, not just to say, "Oh, you got approved one time." We're going to just go ahead and finish the development at any cost, whatever. But, you know, construction projects are very, very difficult. So I really appreciate the open and going to bring any changes back to the council. And absolutely, I will support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just had a quick question. When you say 40 units, you're talking 40 duplexes?
Yeah, total, like 20 duplexes would total 40.
Yeah, so 20 buildings, but duplexes.
Right. And the great thing about the duplexes is that it's homeownership, but it comes with a project-based housing certificate that allows somebody to rent the other unit and provide income for that family to pay their mortgage. You know, I just wanted to say, Counselor Chow, it was a great point that you made about homeownership, because we had originally thought about doing rental housing up there, like doing garden-style apartments in that area. And then we decided, you know, homeownership is the way to go. The pride of homeownership really makes a great development in the city. So that's why we're sticking with the homeownership duplexes with the project-based certificates that go along with it.
All right. Thank you. Normally, I don't like to change the zoning, but it looks like a good project, and so.
Move to approve.
Yep. Roll call?
Second.
Need a motion? Yeah, motion by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Elliott. Roll call?
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Before Attorney Murphy goes, may I just openly say that Ann did a great job decorating the tree? That's all I have to say.
And the planning board last night, somebody said it was crooked. So I hope we're going to straighten it tomorrow morning.
As long as they didn't mean you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. Thank you. 4-2, vote on the minimum residential factor. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council, vote adopting the minimum residential factor for the fiscal year 2021. Open the meeting to...
What is that number? Did I say that number?
What is the number? Can't read his writing.
The factor would be .877968. So it's part of the record and part of the vote.
Open the meeting to all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in speaking in opposition? 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 That portion is closed of the hearing. Need a vote? So motion by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Noon. Any questions? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the people that are watching at home, we have a split tax rate in the city, one residential and one for commercial, industrial, and personal property. And the purpose of this is to try to minimize the impact of the tax levy on residential homeowners. To me, it's the thing that we should do. I know it places a greater burden on our businesses, but it does provide relief to residential homeowners. Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to, through you, Madam Manager, to or to the Chief Financial Officer, we adopt the maximum shift. Can you just explain that for maybe even some of our newer members and certainly the people at home? Exactly what we do? We shift the valuation to 1.75, is it not the max? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is exactly right, that this process is essentially the end of setting the budget that was voted, normally is voted on in the spring. This year, we approached it in a bit of a different way. But the tax rate recap that gets submitted to the Department of Revenue to set the tax rate, this factor that the council voted on is a calculation based on all of the expenses of the city and the values that have been assessed by the assessing office to maintain, under the law, the maximum shift away from the residential class. So the number that the clerk read that the City Council will be voting on will do just that. It will shift to the maximum extent allowable under the law, the tax burden away from the residential class.
Thank you. I know we're getting in the weeds here, but I do think it's important for people at home that are going to get their tax bills to know this and remind them. I know Ms. LaMay usually is here, but I think that was a good explanation. So and also, before we take this vote, I know there's another transfer coming that's somewhat related to this. And I just want to speak to it. I know we'll vote on it after, but, oh, it's coming up after, okay.
Yep, we'll do it right after the vote.
Yeah, we'll take it out of order, Counselor, and bring it right up after.
Okay, good.
Any other questions before the roll call? So I already did the vote.
You already did the motion.
So roll call.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor, Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
So I need a motion to suspend the rules. We'll take 7-4 out of order by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Noon. 7.4, vote transfer surplus overlay. Permission to wait the full reading. Second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council, vote to transfer the amount certified by the Board of Assessors as surplus in the overlay to reduce the 2021 tax levy. Counselor Elliott, did you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is good news. I know I made this motion just a couple of weeks ago. So I appreciate the Board of Assessors looking at the overlay. This $300,000 that we're about to vote on will reduce the tax burden, and it's a commitment that the manager and the Chief Financial Officer and this council made when we adopted the budget, that we're going to look for ways to reduce the levy burden. And I believe you've held your end up of the bargain. And I think we'd like to have more, but $300,000 is a lot. It will reduce the levy, or it will reduce people's taxes. We'd all like to reduce them more, but I think it's a step in the right direction. I think we adopted a very lean budget to begin with. There were not new jobs. And so I'm not going to relive the budget, but I think this is worthy of note, that we keep sharpening our pencils, as we say, and we're trying to reduce that levy and the impact. And going to this account, you know, is part of that process. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Madam Manager and the Chief Financial Officer. I appreciate us keep looking at ways to reduce this, and here's a very, very strong way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion to approve by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Samaras. Roll call?
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
4-3 ordinance, extend outdoor seating. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council, ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, as amended by Chapter 243, Article 4, sidewalks generally, by amending 243-23 entitled "Street Seats in the Public Space". Open the hearing to all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. What's the wish of the body? Any questions?
Second.
We got a motion by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Noon. Roll call?
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Utility public hearing. 5-1, National Grid, requests installation of 24 feet of electrical conduit at 179 Bridge Street for service to Riverwalk Phase 2. Open the hearing to all those in favor.
There's an individual from National Grid on the line. I think it's Joe's iPhone. He's connecting now. Well, five point one, so it's going to be Joe's iPhone. He's still connecting. He's muted, but...
Mr. Mayor, she's going to the wire inspector for recommendation, correct?
Yeah, after the hearing, these get referred to the wire inspector. He's having a problem getting in, so I guess we can move forward on it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion by Councilor Rourke, second by Councilor Mercier, to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation. Thank you. Five two, new singular wireless, request installation of wireless small cell facility at 6 Industrial Ave. Open up the hearing to all those and to anyone in favor.
Michael Dolan here speaking for New Singular.
Go ahead, Michael, you're all set.
Hi, good evening. Michael Dolan, on behalf of the applicant AT&amp;T from the law firm of Brown Rudnick. This is a situation where my client's wireless network is experiencing data capacity issues at this location, and what we're doing is proposing a small cell antenna installation on a replacement light pole. The new light pole will be about five feet away from the existing light pole. To most people driving by, they won't notice any difference. Everything's being done in a sleek, concealed way, and this small cell antenna facility with the antenna on the top of this pole and the equipment built inside it will help provide better coverage for the residents, businesses, and commuters in this area of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition, that portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Drinkwater. Five three, new singular wireless, request installation of wireless small cell facility at 282 Appleton Street. Open up the hearing to all those in favor.
Is Michael Dolan on this one as well?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Offset, Michael.
Thank you. Once again, we're proposing a similar situation where my client has this one small location where there are significant data capacity issues, and this replacement pole, once again, five feet away from the existing pole, and done in a stealth manner, will help correct that situation, and we're seeking a granted location for approval to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Noon. Communications, motion responses, motion response A, Comcast Internet.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Oh, yeah, sorry. Councilor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for the suspension of the rules to allow the city manager to speak about the Huntsfall and the Claybrook issue. We also have a motion by Councilor Elliott and Councilor Rourke on the same matter. I think it's timely that we allow the city manager to give some information regarding this matter.
Joe, another...
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Conway. Madam Manager?
Bring the motion.
Oh, what's that?
I said, should we bring the motion at the same time?
Yeah, that's what he was, yeah, we'll do that, too. Thank you.
Okay, let's bring the motion in.
What's that?
Ten five, yeah.
Oh, read the motion, too. I thought we'd do one and then we'd do the other, sorry. Ten five. The motion to bring in by Councilor Elliott, Councilor Rourke, request environmental flood issues, flood issues, subcommittee meet with the Lowell Fire Department Chief and Director of Emergency Management to discuss protocol for lowering the bladder dam to adjust the water height in the Clay Pit watershed for homes experiencing flooding. The manager go, sure. Councilor Elliott?
The motion speaks for itself, in my opinion. That area has been experiencing flooding again as a result of what we thought was the height of the dam, and then that backing up consequently, we learned there was also problems with the beavers building dams, as there has been historically a chronic problem. And I know that there is a protocol that you just can't go and break dams down, and it's a protected, the beaver's a protected species naturally, so that's why we thought we'd file this motion. A, to get an update, we have a new police chief. They'd be good for...
Fire chief, right?
The fire chief, excuse me, new fire chief, to learn, understand, listen, and we can all get a good refresher on the protocol for the dam and the effect that it has in that neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Councilor Rourke has anything more to add? And then the manager, I appreciate, and by the way, before you speak, I appreciate the timeliness, Madam Manager, of the response, it was over the weekend, and then, I'm not sure, you know, the action that was taken, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilor Rourke?
Yeah, everything Councilor Elliott said was spot on, and, you know, I know there's a couple of different situations over there that the manager's looking at, so I look forward to the report. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. As the council is aware, over the weekend, we did receive a number of communications from the Pawtucketville Citizen Group, as well as people out there regarding flooding that was happened, happening, and we were having a number of weather situations, heavy rain, some snow. And in consulting with the departments who potentially involved over the weekend, we were able to discover a few things. For one, the, I know it was inspected and it appeared that the flooding in question at Clay Pit Brook was a result of some of the beaver damming that's been going on out there. The Animal Control Officer sent a lengthy report through the chief over the weekend about the protocols and the requirements under the law. And in short, and we'll get this full report to the council and to the subcommittee, but in short, in order to deal with the beaver dams, you need someone who is certified and to handle trapping or removing beavers from the area. There's a whole protocol with the Conservation Commission, but we were able to determine through Christine Clancy that the issue concerning the Conservation Commission in Clay Pit Brook, we didn't have to start anew because there was an existing permission to go out there, so that was fortunate. We also had the consultant, Wachusett Wildlife, on contract, and so they've been able to go out right away rather than have to go through the whole issue. The fire chief will be working, as has been mentioned, is new to this issue, and I know he's consulting with his predecessor, who had a lot of familiarity on that, as well as the emergency management team is new. George Rose had retired, and he had familiarity with the flooding issues, but Chad Ahmed is also on board, and he and the chief will work together regarding questions about protocols, notices, who do people get in touch with, and so that's all going to be presented to the council and to the subcommittee. But just so the council knows, because this was in nature of an emergency in the sense of the flooding happening, so our consultant went out and did trap and remove two beavers from the area. The DPW was out yesterday and today, so because the Conservation Commission has given permission in this area, they were able to breach these dams in part. So they attempted to remove a blockage, which was in a culvert on Malden Avenue, and so they worked at that. The waters were too high, so they had to go to breach some of the dams. They went downstream on Malden Ave and found two additional beaver dams, one at Bedford Avenue and one behind Regatta Field. They breached both of those today, and the water level began to flow, and we're very hopeful we'll alleviate some of the flooding. They also discovered a very large dam. There's one that they're aware of, and it's been a chronic issue, but there was another one that they discovered that was quite large, and they breached that as well. So they can only breach so much, but then they will be back tomorrow to continue, both the DPW and the Fire Department, to continue to monitor the water levels downstream of Malden, and to make sure it recedes, and then hopefully be able to get into the culvert to remove that blockage. And so they're hoping to do that together with the Fire Department tomorrow. So we will keep you posted, but they have been out there each day, and as I said, fortunately, there was the expert who was on contract, and fortunately, we didn't have to delay by going to the Conservation Commission because that was already in place, so. But there are a number of issues in terms of others raised by the motion, bladder dam, et cetera, that will be addressed to the council and through to the subcommittee.
Great. Thank you, Councilor.
Can I just ask a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor? Thank you for that report, and again, thank you for addressing this over the weekend. Aren't that, is it an order of conditions, or there's a standing maintenance or ability to breach these dams? Does that remain in place because, I think you were on the council at the time, we had this ongoing, it was Malden, and then it was even off Totman Road, so they're busy little creatures, and then, you know, they've been working all summer on this.
I've been saying that a lot.
We haven't had a lot of water, so I can see why all of a sudden this just came out of nowhere.
I believe, I don't know if Christine Clancy is on or Eric's legal regarding the Conservation Commission, and I didn't bring that report with me.
But it's not something that has to be renewed or discussed.
No, I believe when it comes to Clay Pit Brook, that area, it's a standing condition.
Okay, great. That's all I really wanted to know.
Manager Donahue, I am on the call, and I can answer that question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So as far as that, so we actually, DPW, knowing that this area is a flood-prone area, we monitor it, and so anytime we get rain, we drive through that area. So it was about a week or two ago that we noticed that the water was starting to rise, and so what we did is we obtained an emergency notification permit, and that was done through Eric's legal and through Conservation Commission. So I believe that would be on your next agenda. So that was filed last week as emergency, and that's how we do it, is we file, and with Wachusett Wildlife, because they're the certified consultant that can do the trapping, that was filed last week. So it's really through an emergency notification permit.
So if you weren't monitoring this, then it could have been...
We would have to get into the Conservation Commission to get permission.
It could have been substantially worse, had you not been monitoring and filed that emergency notification. Okay.
And I do know it was, I think, the year before last, we had a real issue because the individual who we normally contracted with to, who was certified to remove the beavers, was ill and not able to do the work, and we could not find someone else who was registered or duly licensed. So that was a problem, but luckily, this Wachusett Wildlife is under contract.
Okay, great. Great, thank you. Great work, Christine, and your staff.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, sure. Councilor Samaras?
No, thank you, and I want to thank the city manager for that report, and also thank Councilor Elliott, Councilor Rourke, for their motion in regards to this issue as chair of the Subcommittee on Environment and Flooding. I'd like to have a subcommittee meeting on December 22 at 5:30. I'm making that request so we can include the fire chief and other people who are knowledgeable about this issue. I think I can situate in Pawtucketville, you know, just recently, we had some serious rainstorms, and I can understand their concern. Now, again, thank the city manager for having information to allay their fears as to what's going on or what actions are being taken, but I'd also like to be able to, through our subcommittee, give a complete presentation. So thank you. So I just need approval from the council to have that subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Second on that motion for the...
So refer to the subcommittee.
Refer to the subcommittee.
Okay. So motion by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Rourke. Thank you. Back to the agenda, motion response A, Comcast Internet Service to support remote learning. Any questions on that? Sure, Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know you brought this to the school committee and the school department. Are you aware of any idea of how many numbers of families have partaken in this, in the Comcast services?
Right now, I'm unaware. I know that they requested maybe 400...
Hotspots.
Well, is that what they call it with that? The commitments or whatever, but I thought it would be a little bit more than that, but we're trying to find out what's going on with that at our next meeting, actually, tomorrow night.
Okay, and was there any reason why the long delay before the school department got involved with Comcast? I mean, this has been going on, I believe, since April of last year, sorry, of last school year, and I think when the motion was brought at our city council meeting, there was no communication between Comcast and the school department, so, and I know there's been multiple problems with the hotspots that they contracted with, so was there any reason, given why, you know, this wasn't implemented well before the school started?
Yeah, right now, I'm unaware of it. I mean, it was, unfortunately, you know, just didn't go as fast as we thought it would.
It's not directly to you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I know, it was disappointing that it took so long.
Very much so, yeah.
Took a while. I thought Comcast did a good job by coming up on their end by forgiving some debt, trying to make this program work, so we'll try to get some answers.
Yeah, and I think Comcast, rightly so, has taken a beating here and there in the city over, you know, past number of years, but I think when, in this situation, you know, they are working, you know, just as hard as the city side of helping kids out, right? So, you know, thankful to them and, you know, and to you for bringing this over to the school department and hopefully getting this, you know, into every home that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I mean, it should be noted in the report that Comcast is going to donate 100 computers to the high school seniors, so, you know, they're moving ahead, trying to be positive, trying to help out, 100 computers. It's nothing to sneeze at, so we appreciate what Comcast is doing and working with us. Thank you. Anything on motion response B, Father John Santos Way Sidewalk? Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, according to the report, and I'm glad to get the report, it seems to me that I have to wait two years for this sidewalk to be replaced. Is that what this report is telling me?
It would be the next budget. In the current FY '21, the current budget we have now, there isn't a budget for sidewalk, but it can be put into the capital budget, which would mean it would probably be the summer of '21. This coming summer. So the new budget will start on July 1st for '22, but it would be, it would be the summer of '21.
But it'd probably be put on a list. I would hope that this could get priority because that is a church.
Right.
And there's a lot of people that go in and out, and it is in a neighborhood, and I thought that that would be important.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Uh, any questions on motion response C, Lawrence Street Traffic? Mayor, it's Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, thanks for the report. Mr. Mayor, if I may ask Commissioner Clancy to speak to reason why a blind spot mirror at this location, the railroad bridge on Lawrence Street is not appropriate at this time?
Councilor, um, Ms. Clancy?
Yes, thank you. So we do not recommend using, they call convex mirrors and they're not recommended at all in the city, really I think per MUTCD guidelines, because mirrors can't be used during certain weather conditions, rain, fog, snow, and then same at night. So it's really not a good solution since it can't be used at, uh, in those conditions. Um, so it's, I think, if there is an issue, it should be addressed by other measures, maybe reduce speed or other signage. Um, that's something really I think the transportation, the next transportation engineer can look at and maybe make some recommendations.
I, you know, I do understand what Commissioner Clancy is talking about, but I still feel that there's a need to address this blind spot at this location. So, um, you know, with between Commissioner Clancy's and the new, when hi, the city traffic engineer, that to come up or find an alternative solution to address it, because you can't just not do anything at all here before something, do something now before something bad happened. Thank you.
And Councilor, we will refer this to the traffic engineer. It will, this will be put on the to-do list for the new traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Madam Manager, informational presentation from CBA?
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give some background and I know Craig Thomas is on the call to answer questions, but, uh, prior to my being the manager, I was aware of a proposal from the CBA for this particular site, maybe it was CBA and another entity. Uh, and there had been lots of discussion and some controversy around that particular proposal. About a month or a month and a half ago, um, I was presented with a request to sign a letter of support for a proposal for the same site, but a different project, um, in many substantive ways. Uh, and given the fact that the project had changed from the time it was before the council, not this council, but a prior council, and, uh, there, the, the request for support, it's not necessarily a council vote, but it is, um, asking the city to support the project for, um, requests through the state for things like tax credit and so forth. So prior to, um, that, it seemed appropriate for the CBA to make a presentation to the council so the council can see what is being asked now for that location. And again, it's the 555 Merrimack Street, not very far here from City Hall. So if it's Craig, uh, I don't know if there are any other questions, but it's my understanding that CBA will make a quick presentation to the council on what they're asking city support for.
Okay. We did have a registered speaker, is that...
Yes, we did, Claire Ricker.
Okay.
Thank you, Manager Donahue, and through you and the mayor to the council. Each year, the state runs a large funding program that nonprofits and some for-profit entities apply for, which is the funding mechanism that builds the vast majority of our affordable housing. That's why these conversations tend to come up every call and Claire Ricker, one of our former colleagues now over at CBA, has the presentation that's up on, on the screen to talk about the changes.
Whenever you're ready, Claire.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Um, thank you, Madam Manager, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors for having me here this evening. My name is Claire Ricker. I'm very happy to be able to reintroduce myself to all in my new role as the Real Estate Director at Coalition for a Better Acre. Um, tonight I will be presenting the Coalition for a Better Acre Sober Community Project for 555 Merrimack Street. And I'll start with the project location, neighborhood context and a little about the building design, and then I'll speak about the tenant target population, our plan for supportive services and the project goals. So just to orient us a little bit more, 555 Merrimack is the red star on this map of The project location, um, here I have an identified City Hall, Merrimack Street, some additional CBA properties and 555 Avenue. Proposed sober community development is at the former home of the Lowell House Addiction and Recovery Services Building. Uh, they moved to Lowell Community Health Center a few years ago, a short while ago. Uh, this parcel is canal adjacent, it's adjacent to the Western Canal. Um, there is a brand-new, beautiful bridge with no weight restrictions on it over the Western Canal of this section. Um, this part of Merrimack Street northwest of City Hall is underdeveloped. Um, there's, uh, low-rise buildings, three in a row, with some oversized surface parking area, the former Lowell House building again, uh, the Flowers by Albert building and then the Sovereign Bank building. Um, all single-story, uh, low-density, this is urban design that is incongruous with the rest of this section of Merrimack Street and the acre more broadly. Um, the vernacular is generally two to five stories with parking behind the building and on this, or on the street. Um, so I pointed out a few other CBA-owned properties here. Uh, these properties are but middlesex street, most are historic. Um, as an organization, we have invested heavily in this middle Merrimack section between City Hall and the Western Canal. Well, here's some existing conditions of the building. As we zoom in even closer, uh, we can see that currently the building provides a blank street wall on Merrimack. It's removed from the sidewalk in a public way. Kind of even worse, we can also see the canal side of the existing building is overgrown and inept. Um, the building's many recesses and overhangs provide shelter and blind spots that unfortunately can encourage antisocial behavior. So with these things in mind, um, we developed this building concept drawing. So we're looking southeast down Merrimack Street now towards City Hall. And you can see the building massing here more in conformance with the neighborhood scale and even mirroring the historic building across the street, both at roughly four stories. This is an improvement over the existing building, well, consideration, design consideration for how the structure will interact with the street and how it will interact with the Western Canalway. The Merrimack Street wall and the canal side facade are active in this drawing with large windows that overlook the canal and the main entrance shifted to, the main entrance of the building shifted to Merrimack Street. Now that I've talked a little bit about location and neighborhood context, I'd like to talk about the goals of this project beyond these positive externalities that are generated by the replacement of the existed, uh, existing blighted building. I know they say never read slides, but I'm going to read this one. This project is an opportunity to extend the continuum of care for individuals and families in recovery from substance abuse, substance abuse disorder by providing permanent, affordable housing and appropriate programming with a resident preference for people with at least one year in recovery from substance use disorder. We are trying to build out the continuum of care for people recovering from addiction with a continuum of housing. Recovery is different for everyone, but a typical path is detox, short-term residential treatment, halfway house, maybe a recovery home, sober housing, and memoir. These are all transitional housing situations. We believe that it is in this moment when an addict moves from a sober home back into the community at large that we see relapse and too often the inability to maintain stable housing. We are trying to build a half-step beyond sober housing and create a community supportive and understanding of recovery in a place where recovery and drug use is talked about openly by those who wish to maintain their own sobriety. We believe this model has promised to reduce cyclical relapse and for housing itself to provide one solution to the wicked problem of addiction and homelessness attributable to the opioid epidemic. Recovering addicts with stable housing relapse less often. Recovering addicts with stable housing relapse less often, we know this. We believe this housing model will work, prevent relapse, or to break the cycle of relapse, or to limit relapse to a one-time event. And when we do this, we can divert homelessness. We can allow residents to focus on their family, their sobriety and their jobs without the additional stressor of housing insecurity. The most likely resident will be someone with sustained sober sobriety and substance use disorder and remission for a minimum of one year. This person is someone who understands that maintaining a sober network is key to long-term sobriety and who is willing to become part of the sober community. That said, we don't plan on drug testing residents, there are no curfews or mandatory meetings, alcohol will be permitted, prohibited from all common areas and the building will be non-smoking. But the plan is that the sober community itself will become accountable to itself. Sorry about that. Here's the project in a nutshell. Twenty-seven apartments, a community room, almost 2,000 square feet storefront commercial space. Lowell House will provide recovery coaching, non-clinical case management and assistance with community and tenant-led programming. The CBA Lowell House service partnership has planned that Lowell House staff will provide approximately 40 hours a week of supportive services to the residents of 555 Merrimack. We'll have a small satellite office in the building, but there will be no ongoing programs provided by Lowell House on this site. Uh, CBA will retain all authority to make property management decisions and will control ownership of the property. Residents will be eligible for all of CBA's programs, such as financial literacy, job training and placement. Again, the building design seeks to activate that section of the Western Canal, windows and lightings overlooking the area, and CBA is also looking to activate our volunteer network and potentially partner with other groups like the Canal Cleaners to maintain that section of the Western Canal, which I know from experience can be a bottleneck for trash and debris. We've also utilized a set of design principles called passive building in order to attain a rigorous and measurable level of energy efficiency in the building. And we think that this project will be the first passive building designed and built in Lowell. In conclusion, CBA has a long history of delivering well-managed, taxable, quality projects in the acre. This project is already permitted, we're at 100% design, we're currently, uh, we are currently finalizing the construction cost at the minute, we should have that number by the end of December. We have dogged-footed financing and subsidy for this sober community project for over three years. With this project iteration, we have been invited to compete for state and federal loan compounding tax credit subsidy and DHCD's winter round. If we are not funded, we intend to seek additional funding sources, as we always do, while preparing the proposal for the next competitive round of funding from DHCD. We should know the outcome of the round by mid-spring 2021. If we are funded, construction of this project should begin as early as fall 2021. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Claire. Any questions from the board? Anybody? Councilor Rourke?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, just reading that, are you going to partner with the Lowell House for the services?
That's correct.
So is there already agreement in place? Is there a screening process? Uh, is there treatment that, a treatment plan that we put in effect before a resident moves in?
Right. So the way that we see this working, CBA has signed a letter of intent with Lowell House to provide this caseworker, uh, caseworker, uh, recovery coach. This project is really intended for folks who have gone through several interventions related to their sobriety and have, you know, sort of made it through sobriety, a little bit shaky potentially, and have really established themselves with some stability and some long-term absence and sobering. We are counting on the Lowell House to identify these folks, but not necessarily, you know, relying on them completely. Um, our property manager, Maloney Properties, does a lot of screening for us as well. Um, they do have capability and capacity to do this for us, but generally we would like to partner with, um, the local service provider who really understands what's going on on the ground. So these would be folks who had, you know, gone through, um, you know, Lowell House's program or others and who have gone through, you know, potentially various residential situations before they come to us in this community. The screening, I think, will be such that, you know, we are really looking for folks, you know, as far as we can, you know, we are still subject to many of our housing requirements, who are interested in establishing this building, these 27 units, as a community with the idea that, you know, potentially the provision of service, the provision of support may fade over time. Um, we may not need to be quite as intentional about those efforts, you know, as folks sort of move even, even further into their, into their sober life along that path. Um, so again, you know, what we're really trying to stress here is that this is a, we feel like this is a housing need that is not quite met in the current situat, in the, you know, in the current, um, continuum of housing that's available for those who are dealing with substance abuse disorder. Um, I think that said, it's also important to know that not everybody's path is, you know, through detox, you know, not everybody, you know, gets clean from a place of utter desperation. I mean, uh, there are, there are people who get clean and hold jobs, um, there are people who get clean and stay with their families, um, you know, these, these apartments are for folks that are really looking, um, to, you know, maintain whatever stability they do already have or to gain that in their housing, in this, you know, in this long-term permanent housing. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, somewhat. Um, so, you know, obviously, you know, in recovery and substance addiction, you know, there is a chance of relapse, there's a chance that, you know, more additional support is needed. So if somebody's in your apartment and they're living there, um, you know, and God forbid, you know, relapse happens or addiction kicks in again, what's the process that you have the availability to help, you know, this family or this individual?
Sure. So should, should something like that happen? This is an interesting question. This is one that came up, um, in several calls we had with DHCD. We recognize, we accept that relapse is part of recovery, um, maybe not for everybody, but for most addicts. Um, and so in an effort, um, you know, with this idea that housing itself may help prevent, you know, relapse or sustained, um, relapse, um, we are looking to capitalize a revolving rent fund that will allow folks to go to detox for 30 days and be able to come back to their unit and be able to, you know, be able to continue to receive support, you know, ultimately from their, from the community that is there. I think that as, you know, different people, you know, go through different stages of their sobriety, it makes a, it's not the worst thing in the world to have others around them who are feeling the same way, who, um, who may be able to lift them out of, you know, or maybe even to recognize, you know, some of these warning signs of relapse even before, you know, a, you know, a service, service provider could, or, you know, before a representative from Lowell House could. Um, this is what we're really counting on in this, um, in this project, is that, no, certainly not that tenants will police each other, but that in the, you know, in the umbrella of sobriety and how it works, you know, it's a group lifting others to maintain and support, that this project in and of itself will help, you know, people coming back, people re-establishing their sobriety, you know, and then thus, uh, hopefully decreasing the chance of another relapse.
So the treatment provider will be, have an office or programming done right there at the, at the residency?
No, the expectation would be that should someone be, go through a relapse, um, that they would either, you know, self-identify that they need to go back and do detox again, or that they would work with, um, with Lowell House or another, um, organization or a... that they would work with Lowell House or another organization, or approach CBA, or approach Maloney Properties about, hey, I gotta go, I gotta go to detox, what do I do to keep my place while I'm out? And so, we're working through the details of how we can then reserve that, reserve their unit, so that when they come back, they'll have it, and they will have that stability to then build on again, so that it becomes, you know, more of a, someone tripping rather than someone falling off a cliff. We don't intend, CBA doesn't, you know, intend to diagnose anyone, you know, we do think that there will be enough recognition among the other tenants and so, hopefully, among the case manager that is provided, that should someone be heading down that, you know, down that road, we can get to them early or be able to provide them with a place to come back to when they're out of detox again.
Yeah, I'm not sure you want to rely on other tenants to keep watch over others. But, so, the curiosity is, is that, you know, you call it a sober community, you have the stats listed and all that other stuff, but there's no treatment provider on scene that's there. So, that, you know, how do they get referred to Lowell House? Like, what's the process if someone needs extra help? Is it just, hey, go see this person or that person? I mean, I understand the scope of the project I think is needed, you know, but without someone from Lowell House, I guess, with you to present or to tell the council, you know, how you plan on go about, you know, assisting these people that need it, you know, so far, you know, I've heard we rely on other tenants to keep watch over others, which, you know, in some instances might be okay, but I would just like to see a little more on the treatment side. You know, it's being marketed as a sober community, a partnership with the Lowell House, you know, but just hearing more of, you know, no one's on site, they basically watch over yourself. So, just trying to figure out the difference between any project that comes before us or to the planning board that's just residential or apartments and this one here.
So, again, this is, the tenant population that we're looking to put in, that we would be, you know, looking to rent to in this project would be a group of folks that have a stable, sustained length of time with sobriety, who are not in some kind of, who are not in acute crisis. Forty hours a week on site is someone there, eight hours a day initially. The hope is that that person will not need to be there. The reality is, is they will be there. So, eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, a case manager from Lowell House will be in the satellite office or will be available and on call. I would argue that this, the idea of this sober community really came out of the, you know, the way that a 12-step meeting works, where it is a group of people together looking to support each other through sobriety, through the Pratt Falls, through all of it, and become, you know, this is sort of how it works, you know, this is how 12-step recovery works. Not that this is a project that is a 12-step project, but just that we are piggybacking on that idea that it is the community that really keeps the addicts sober. We will have, like I said, we will have staff on site. We will have to monitor, I think, how that goes. We will work really closely with Lowell House to do tenant screening, folks that are interested in this kind of living, and be clear with folks that this is the expectation. You are going to move into what we hope is a large, sustained 12-step meeting with these folks permanently, you know, or, you know, until you're ready to move in potentially to one of Mr. Murphy's houses. You know, what, the problem that we're trying to solve here is when someone is doing very well in sobriety and has, you know, a chunk of time, who then, you know, is sort of, you know, fledged out of some of these more acute housing situations and then have a place for them to really land and have a place for them before they sort of fall through the cracks, potentially to relapse, potentially to fall into homelessness, to try to provide this community, to try to get folks involved in this community that will help sustain, you know, sustain their sobriety and give them a really, a stable platform with which they can continue their lives.
Okay, so, I'll just finish with this. I think the concept is a good one. I think the details are lacking, you know, of how you want to go about doing this, you know, and as, you know, the manager knows and the council knows, sober homes, they have no regulations. So, you know, and it seems like in a nicer, more expensive sober home to me. And, you know, I think maybe, I'm not sure what the process that you're at with this, but I think it would benefit, you know, the CBA greatly to have a treatment plan in place of what happens if, or this or that. I mean, are these rentals or are these units, are they termed at all? Are they 12 months, 18 months, and then you assist them with other housing, or is it just come and go?
Absolutely not. These are permanent housing, these are permanent apartments. These are just like any other multifamily project that is done. We just completed a project in Haverhill, 44 units with a veterans preference. This would be similar, only we would be looking for folks that do have that sustained amount of time in sobriety. You know, we are hopeful this will work. We are very invested in this model. We think that it is an intervention with housing at a good time for folks who are sober, who are trying to put together longer-term sobriety. This isn't sober housing, I think, as we have come to see it. There are, well, maybe I should talk a little bit about the unit mix. 27 units, nine of those units are two bedrooms. You know, we anticipate people with kids moving in here, folks that, who are employed. The income, the income levels for these rentals, we do have a few at 30%, but most of them are 50 and 60% of AMI, which is a lot. You know, this is for people who have, you know, managed to put some parts of their lives back together and potentially may not be wanting to take, you know, a voucher or, you know, qualify for a department in another multifamily development that may not have these supports and that may not recognize recovery and substance use disorder. You know, I, you know, someone could potentially take their voucher and move into a place and the person next door is a drug dealer throwing a party every night. This is not something that's going to happen at this property. I do appreciate what you said about, you know...
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. We did ask for a brief presentation. I appreciate the explanation, but this could go on all night.
Can I just say something? I mean, others, Councilor Ruck, you'll say? I agree with Councilor Ruck. I agree with the concept. This came before us, I think, at a larger scale the last time, if I recall. I don't remember all the details, but one of the conditions, if I can recall, was that there was going to be support at this location 24 hours a day. I understand there's a lot of intent, and I want to, I support the project, but I would feel more comfortable if there is some structured staff, if you will. You did speak of 40 hours a week, but I think it's, I think it's important for the project as well as the residents. They have made their way to this, if I recall from the last presentation. They've achieved a number of steps in order to be able to become eligible. So, I think it's a detail that should be worked out so that there is some support there. If there's a satellite office there, that means that there, to me, there's some need that should be made available. So, I'm going to support this, but I think that condition that Councilor Ruck raised is important, that it's good for the city, good for the development, good for the residents.
Thank you. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Claire. So, this is what I think CBA tried to do from hearing, hearing what Claire's have, you know, articulated in about half an hour, is that this is like a continuum of care for people recovered from addiction. And Councilor Elliott's correct, you have to get through detox, and then you have to probably short-term of residential treatment, then have a house before you get to come to the sober house. And from the presentation, I learned that Lowell House involved in providing supportive service, like a recovery coach, case management for this project. And the thing I didn't hear yet is that how often and how many, how many times a week for that support service. So, the other thing I didn't hear also is that what is the income level for individuals to be qualified for this place, as well as, you know, is there any preference for Lowell resident? I mean, hearing all that, you know, one hearing all that, I think that may be a condition or something that we want to hear, but I do agree that housing support for people in recovery, you know, is a proven model to reduce likelihood of relapse. So, this is a good thing for those who are, you know, in need for it. I mean, you know, I mean, they got support from Lowell House to do this, to start this project. So, I'm in support of it. Maybe, you know, the project need to answer a few questions that, you know, Councilor Ruck had put forth, and then everything should be okay. It's good for the city. It's good for CBA, it's good for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ruck?
Just a quick follow-up, I apologize. Is there a reason why somebody from Lowell House isn't part of this presentation this evening?
Not that I know of. I was working with DPD and was told, you know, we were working with them to get some city support to submit our pre-up to DHCD, and then I was invited to represent the project.
All right. And lastly, so it's affordable, long-term sober housing will help sustain recovery for those, you know, who demonstrate success going forward. Great. You know, most, all sober houses, they run, you know, AA, NA meetings, they have, you know, the opportunity for, you know, to test if, you know, needed and things like that. You know, and I'm not saying this is on you, but like I said, just, you know, in being in this area, you know, I'd just really like to have heard more of what is available, you know, to the population that's going to be moving in there to assist, to continue, you know, the recovery and so forth. And, you know, my concerns have been sted, you know, many times, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. So, Will? Yep. Councilor Smarath?
Thank you. You know, Councilor Ruck brought up some questions. I mean, I do support this project. When this was originally brought up with Lowell, a combination with Lowell House and CBA, there was going to be, build a large center and what have you, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And Lowell House moved its center over to the Community Health Center, which was a better situation for all of its clients. The one thing is, CBA has had a good reputation in their housing development and the monitoring of the people in those developments. So, we didn't really hear last, tonight, some of the issues that were raised before when Lowell House left, that there would be monitoring of the behavior of these people or support for the people and consequences, if necessary. I think what everybody's looking for is that we're, as a group, we're looking for low-income housing, we're looking for stability for people, we're looking to offer people a chance per leg up, so to speak. And I think this project speaks to all of those issues. But I think there's a concern in which, when it was presented, that there'd be self-appraising of each other, self-watch, that just doesn't work. We really have to know that there is going to be a support system, a clear understanding of what it takes to be able to live in these, in this housing development. So, what the council is looking for is to ensure that it's successful. And all the CBA projects that I am aware of have been successful, but this is a major project for the CBA, and we want to make sure that there is good follow-through. I also have one question. Is there any veteran preference in this, or is this just strictly an issue of need?
This is not planned as a veterans' preference, excuse me, veterans' preference, preference project, although we have recently completed one of those in Haverhill, and we have, we're almost underway on a nine-unit veterans' preference project in Drakett. It certainly entertained doing a veterans' preference project in Lowell.
Okay, but not for this particular project?
Not with the partnership as it stands with Lowell House. We had partnered on those other two projects with VNOC, which is the Veterans Northeast Outreach Center, to provide, to visit those two developments. It certainly worked to do a project like that in Lowell, but in order for this to do, to be more of a veterans' preference project, we may have to seek a different service partner.
But you do understand the support and monitoring that we're speaking to regarding this project?
Certainly, yes. I understand, something in addition to a full, just a full-time staffer.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this project. I think it's a good thing for the city. And one thing that I think stands out to me is that, at least as I understand it from the presentation, the individuals who'd be living in this housing most likely would not, if they weren't here, be living in other sober housing, as it's commonly known, you know, a sober house. This seems to be fitting a need that really doesn't currently exist in most cases. So, individuals will most likely be living in housing without built-in peer support, peer counseling, and other supportive services. So, this really does seem like, you know, in the continuum of care, something that is not really out there in a large quantity right now. So, I think it does certainly produce a net benefit for the city and sounds like a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Councilor Elliott?
Well, it's not, what are we being, I mean, this is a presentation, it's on the informational, what are we being asked to?
Sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Counselor. So, this, as I mentioned, it's not a vote of the council, but it was a project of nature and scope that it appeared important to me to have the council understand what is being proposed and to get feedback from the council as to what the council wants to do. Again, CBA is asking the city and a city manager to sign letters of support for the project. I felt it was very important for the council to weigh in, to indicate, is it something the city wants to support? Are there terms or conditions that the city would like to see or more information? What I'm hearing is there's still more information that the city would, that the council is asking, I think very valid points. And so, we can go back to CBA and try and see what more can be done in terms of the project, if that's the wish of the council.
Now, that helps explain what we're asking, I think. I think we delivered that message, and there are some concerns, but generally, I think we all support it. So, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Community preservation update?
Thank you. So, we do have in the packet, Mr. Mayor, an update as to the community preservation, the makeup. I know Eric Slagel is on, or I believe he is, to speak to this, if there are any questions about the report.
Sure. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you. I only, thank you for the report. It's interesting, it's good to know, there's quite a bit of money that's already been generated. Madam Manager, you put together the advisory committee as required under the statute. My question was, are we limited? And I'm not looking to expand this board, but I just thought, I'm wondering if Richard, How, he was a, sort of spearheaded this effort, I know he has another role of registered deeds. Does it make sense, should that individual be part of that committee, or have you thought about that? And I just throw it out there.
Sure, Madam Manager.
Yeah, I believe there had been conversations with Mr. How. We can follow up. The makeup of the board is by statute, I believe.
Ah, okay. That was really my question. Okay, that's good to know. And secondly, I know that a position, we're going to add a, is that going to be a city position in this, you know, the, I'm a little concerned if we're creating another position and then that fund is exhausted and then, you know, we kind of inherit a lot of the benefits and all of the other costs. Is that going to be a city employee? Is it going to be a contracted employee? I mean, I would prefer that it be contracted in the event that, well, I don't know what the statute requires. I guess we have to hire somebody to manage... I guess we have to hire somebody to manage that, but-
Yeah, the, the board, and it's my understanding would be an ordinance employee, or, I don't know, there, Mr. Slagel can weigh in on that.
I am, I am here, Madam Manager, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. The, the position is an assistant, an assistant planner position, specifically dedicated to the Community Preservation Act. The position is funded from the, from, from the funds of the Community Preservation Act. The statute allows for up to 5% of the, of the fund balance to be used for salaries and office overhead. Because the position is funded specifically from that, from that source, and is listed as being funded from that source, if that source for some, for some reason was to go away, then that position, I, I believe, and I would refer to, to the CFO about this, but the position, the person of the position would no longer have funding, similar to a grant-funded position.
Okay, so, this is going to be an ordinance, I haven't seen it before, the council, so-
It hasn't come be-
This, this is not an ordinance position, this is a, this is a union position.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's a union position funded specifically from this source.
Okay, well, it, it's already been publicly advertised, so, don't, is it, has it been included in the budget already? It was in last year's, it's in this fiscal, fiscal year's budget?
This was included in the FY 2021 budget.
Okay.
Funded by the Community Preservation Fund.
Okay. Okay.
The, one of the first things that the committee has to do is do a plan and present that, and then they will then move into setting up priorities, entertaining applications. I mean, there's a fair amount of work that the committee has to do, and then the matter would come before the council. So, Mr. Slagel, if you want to walk through what, what the function and responsibilities of the committee will be, and this, of course, is a volunteer committee.
Sure. So, the, as the manager mentioned, the first responsibility of the, the staff member and the, the committee will be to create a community preservation plan. That plan will basically lay out the priorities of the, the city and the Community Preservation Committee for the spending of those, those funds. The second step would be to set up policies and procedures for the, for the applications that would be put forward for funding from both municipal and private applicants, and to then begin the application, vetting, and review process. We anticipate that the committee is going to be highly involved in this, but it's also going to be heavily, there's going to be a heavy staff requirement for both setup and the ongoing administration of these jobs. These, these individual grants that are, that are given out by the committee, they're going to have to be kind of followed up on and made sure that they're completed, and that, we anticipate that cycle is going to be an annual cycle of, of, you know, project application, project review, and project follow-up. And the committee meets, I believe, a minimum of four times a year, and, and at a certain point, once they vote on their recommendations for funding, those recommendations will then be referred to the City Council for review and approval. The City Council has the final say on whether those recommendations are enacted.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, these individual liaisons to the, the committee, this is similar to the people who work for the Zoni Board of Appeal. So, anyhow, you said that the committee meet four times a year. So, beside a meeting, so basically, the liaison person will prepare the meeting, you know, do advertisement, you know, put it out there so the public know about the meeting, and so on and so forth, and you talk about plan. Does this require a full-time job?
The, the position is contemplated to be a half, a 50% working on the Community Preservation Act ultimately, and 50% assisting with other planning efforts in the development services.
So, you use, you, so, so in other words, you use the, the source, the CPA source to pay for work that are done in the Department of Developmental Services?
The, the, for the first year, this person will be, will be working full-time on the community preservation. Going forward, it's anticipated to be, anticipated to be a, a half-time working on community preservation, half-time working on other staffing needs, yes.
I couldn't, I couldn't see a full-time position for this to start off with, really, even going forward. I mean, I know that the Zoni Board, liaison to the Zoni Board, does not require a full-time job. They do a lot of work for Department of Developmental Services, but full-time job for this, and you use the money for CPA to do this, that's just not right.
Well, so, I, I wouldn't suggest that actually we do have a full-time staff person. We have three full-time planners that administer the zoning board, the planning board, and the conservation commission.
Well, I guess the horses left the barn already in this one, because it's already in the 2021 FY already, and, boy, I didn't know that was on FY 2021 for this position for full-time. If I knew then, I wouldn't support it. But now, I guess it's, it's done. So, my, my question is to the, to the CFO with regard to the second page, actually, for fund receive, indicated that the, the matching fund, I know that between 15 to 25%, so the matching fund that reflect here that we receive, does that reflect on what percentage that, Mr. CFO?
The amount that's listed in the report of approximately $200,000 is about 17%, which every year, the state will publish the matching amount, and then it is dispersed to every community that has adopted the Community Preservation Act. We can anticipate a, a, a similar dispersment every year that will be credited to the CPA fund.
So, so the range will be between 15 and to 25%, is that correct?
I think that's approximately right, however, I think it might be based on receipts from land transactions.
Yeah, Counselor, that's what it has been in recent years. Again, when this started, it was a much higher matching amount when there were fewer communities, and then as more communities are participating, the match from the state has changed. But there is constantly a push in the legislature for there to be a greater matching amount from the state, depending on revenues, depending on formula and so forth. So, but the, but what you just mentioned, that's what it has been for the past several years.
Thank, thank, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay, billboards?
Thank you. Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, we, we did include the, part, part of the communication regarding COVID and masking up. We do have billboards around the city, I think seven or eight of them, that you will see. I did also want to make a quick announcement regarding the testing and the testing sites. Since we were here last, we mentioned that Trinity, we had a partnership with Trinity Ambulance that had its first testing date last Thursday, went very well. I want to point out again, the testing sites that I'll talk about very quickly are for Lowell residents only, and that's because the city of Lowell is using our CARES Act dollars to pay for this testing. In order to secure appointments, this is by appointment, very easy to get online, and what has resulted in people not having to wait hours and hours. It's about 10 or 15 minutes tops that people have had to wait, so it's run, it has been running very smoothly. As I said, last Thursday, Trinity EMS tested down at Colley Memorial Stadium, about 400 residents. These will continue with Trinity at that site on December 10th this week and December 17th. In order to get an appointment, people can reserve it at trinityems.com. What we do Lowell COVID testing, these are also on our own website. We also have a, a contract with Cataldo Ambulance. They began testing yesterday at the Showcase Cinema Site. Yesterday, they tested 333 residents on the first day, and they're anticipating to test about 500 residents or more every day. They're starting at 10:00 AM, it's, strike that, they're going to start at 8:00 AM. The first couple of days, they start at 10:00 in order to get this off the ground. But again, yesterday, the residents were able to get through the site in about 10 or 15 minutes, and they, as I said, they expect to handle up to 500 tests a day. Appointment only, you can go to cataldoambulance.com/COVIDtesting. The link again is on our homepage, and all residents are eligible to be tested. They don't need symptoms, they don't need a referral from doctors, and those who are for the Cataldo Site, they should approach from Industrial Ave, follow Reese Avenue towards the cinema, and enter the site on the driveway to the left of the building. So, that site will be open seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM through December. It will be closed on December 24th, 25th, and 31st. So, just so people understand, those two testing sites are available. We are continuing to work with the state and, and ask the state to pick up testing come January, because we won't have CARES Act money, and because that wasn't forthcoming, we, hearing from the council, hearing from the residents how important testing was here, that is why we decided to implement the testing that we were able to stand up pretty quickly. So, you know, the cases in, in Lowell continue to be very high. The last 14 days, we had 1,777 cases. It's about an average of 126.9 cases a day. Last Saturday, we had 263 cases. Today, we had 196. Our, we're, we're the third highest in the state for, for case numbers, and so, that's why testing continues to be a real priority for us here in the city. I wanted to also report to the council, this has been an ongoing issue, the homeless. I think I reported over the weekend that thanks to yeoman's work by our Planning and Development, Mary Shannon Thomas, CTI, and Life Connections, we were able to get now up 33 people placed in hotels who were otherwise on the street and vulnerable. These are going to be at hotels in Chelmsford, and throughout the weekend, we placed more and more homeless. Our goal is to have at least 60 beds placement, and we're very optimistic that we will be able to get there. This requires not just support and partnership from the state, but also from CTI and Life Connections, and they are having to hire more staff to supervise at these locations, and they have been great partners. So, this is, as I said, funded in part through our partnership with, with DHCD. We're working with FEMA and the city's fundings through ESG and CARES $2. So, we're trying to put together every resource we have to address the need of, of those vulnerable individuals, while at the same time, we're working to find other beds for them during the winter months. So, so as of today, we have 33 people placed, and this will go through April.
Thank you. Councilor Chow, and then Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to commend Madam Manager for doing really, really good work in getting this testing site going. We've gone from having no free test site because the state wasn't supporting these sites, and we went, we got on to having one at Colley, one a day, and now we have two that provide these test services seven days a week. And I know you work very hard in the background to make sure this happens in response to the concerns of the residents of, of the city. My, my question is, I know that these, these are funded by the CARES Act, the CARES money. How much is each testing site cost from the city through the CARES Act money?
So, thank you, Counselor. That's dependent on how many tests are administered on a daily basis. The CFO, Mr. Baldwin, could address that more, more specifically?
Sure. I'll, I'll just add some general budgetary points. Again, it, based on the amount of tests that are actually performed, it's a contract for services rendered. And, and there's a number of components that go into the site. There's, you know, police details, there's site work, traffic cones, other supplies. But for the site at the, or at Showcase, it's approximately $956,000 plus other, you know, supply costs, police details, et cetera, and then a, a lower number, about 200-some-odd thousand for the site at, at Colley. And that is being funded with a combination of federal and state dollars, the state being CARES, federal being FEMA, public assistance, and where FEMA does not cover, so FEMA pays 75%, 25% is typically the responsibility of the city, but we're able to use CARES to fund that 25%. So, the proposition is a zero, zero dollars on the tax levy, so to speak.
That, that is really, really excellent news and excellent work again to Madam Manager and your administration. It's, you know, with, you know, with all the, the high number, all the red colors that you see throughout the state and the whole country, it's somewhat kind of relieved that we're able to provide this testing to, to our residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent, excellent job, Madam Manager, to open up the free testing site, both in Colley and Showcase. Also, excellent job in finding place for homeless individual, you know, to be able to bring all these good partner together. With regard to the Stop the Spread billboard, Madam Manager, is it possible, Madam Manager, to put the hour of operation for testing, particularly on the Showcase, on the, on the, you know, on the billboard?
We can look into it. I think the billboards are made up, but we, we can look into whether there's any adjustments that can be made.
Yeah, yes, just asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ruck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's one of the subject of, you know, the virus and so forth and the testing. You know, there's an article that came late this afternoon, Madam Manager, I don't know if the council or you saw it, about a Lowell nursing home accepting COVID patients. So, my couple of questions was, you know, were you aware of this before? You know, is this a state, that runs through the state where they say, yes, you can do this? And, you know, when you see the disaster in states, you know, two-thirds of Massachusetts' deaths are nursing homes, New York, New Jersey, you know, just people passing away in huge numbers in nursing homes, we're not giving any heads up at all that this, that this is happening?
No, thank you, Counselor. So, you know, we, we had no communication or involvement regarding this particular nursing home, Willow Manor, although we do, our, our public health nurses talk to all of our nursing homes practically every day about their COVID patients and protocols. We got a call from a Boston reporter sometime during the day, asking about a situation which we had no knowledge of. I contacted Joanne Belanger, our Department of Public Health, she had no knowledge of, of it. Her public health nurse did call there and was told that they were going to, and I don't want to misquote, but as I understood it, it happened late this afternoon, that nursing homes are required to have, when new patients come in, for instance, for rehab or for nursing, they have to quarantine those patients, those new patients for 14 days when they come into a nursing home. And then, once they're quarantined for 14 days, they can move into the regular population. And there are visitors that can come into the nursing homes as current- And there are visitors that can come into the nursing homes as currently, based on the rules. There's also a rule that if a patient tests positive, and they're supposed to test every week in the nursing homes, a positive patient has to be isolated in a separate section of the nursing home. So that's true for every nursing home. What was reported today is a little bit different because it's, as I understood it when I read the article, that Willow Manor will be accepting presumably from the hospital if there's a patient that's tested positive for COVID and it needs to go for rehab. That patient, they've set up a, according to the story, they set up a 10-person ward to accept COVID patients. So that's different than someone who's been a patient and needed to go into isolation. This is yet, I'd call it a third category, as I understand it. And they've set up a separate section. So there's now presumably three sections. And that section, according to the story in the Boston Herald, says that the patients would enter separately and not interact with the other patients. This is not something the city of Lowell was notified of or the public health department. We don't even know who authorized it or why. We do know that we've been chosen to have a field hospital for COVID patients at the UMass Lowell Recreation Center. And that's expected to have up to 60 beds as needed for overflow, if there's an overflow issue. So quite honestly, Counsel, I don't know what the thought process was for this. Or I don't know, there's a mention in the story that they were asked to do this. I don't know by whom. I don't know if it was the state. I don't know. But we're going to try and find out more about this.
And actually, the only follow-up would be is, you know, I'm hopeful that their protocols have changed, their rules on visitation have changed. And again, you know, and I believe it was New York where, you know, it was authorized to send positive patients back into nursing homes, and thousands passed away.
It was a disaster.
Yeah, huge disaster. So, you know, and I would guess that you'd have to get approval from the state in order to do this. And why the state wouldn't contact Ms. Belanger to see if the nursing home is in good standing or whatnot. I mean, just basic questions to find out, because from what I know, Willow Manor is not a small nursing home. You know, it does have a good number of rehab or people living there, right? You know, so our visitors allowed to go in, or, you know, what happens. So I mean, I think there's a lot of questions that I believe residents of the city would want to know the answers to. And, you know, I knew you were applying and signing before I asked you, Madam Manager. So I'm just curious, you know, how it came about. You know, there are other nursing facilities in the city. So, you know, what's the process going forward if they, you know, want to accept positive patients? And, you know, is our health department and our, you know, our nurses comfortable with the idea of this happening? Thank you.
We'll get a report.
Thank you. Chair, Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Madam Manager, I like the boards. I think they send a good message and a good use of the money as well as coming up with the idea of doing testing. So people know, they want to know, and protect themselves and their loved ones. And I think it's been, I think it's been an extraordinary success. Just on the billboards, those billboards are going to be up until the 27th. And I know we don't have funding that'll extend testing all the way through. So I'm not sure if we're going to adjust that message because those billboards are going to stay up till the 27th. But I think we're doing our job here in the city, and you are from the administration. I think we're pleading, we're pleading with residents to do your job too. And that is, you know, do what you can to stop the spread. I think setting up the field hospital, people clearly were looking at trends, but it's, we're going to need it. The last ICU bed was occupied at Lowell General today, which is not a good trend. So where I think is, we're well ahead of the curve and when it comes to providing services. And I think that field hospital is setting it up, setting it up, going to pay dividends and save lives. But people got to, we have to step up. So good job, Madam Manager.
We have seen, Counselor, cases explode, as I just mentioned previously. You know, at Labor Day, we had a little over, you know, 3,000 cases since the beginning of the pandemic. And today, we're closing in on 8,000. And that's just been since Labor Day.
We're all fatigued, but now's the time not to let up, as anyone has mentioned. So I just think these steps that we've taken on the local level, on top of the state and federal, amplify the significance.
And we are, we are working and talking to the state daily as well as the delegation about securing support going forward once the CARES Act money goes away, especially if the federal government doesn't come through with more. And for testing, and then of course, looking forward toward vaccines. And that's going to be a major undertaking that communities will be tasked with doing. So, you know, we are looking at all aspects of that.
So one last, I spoke to the CFO about this. CARES Act goes away on December 31. Can we forward fund any, anything, contracts for services rendered?
So what you, you, the rules are that the money, it has to be, you have to expect delivery of goods or services.
Before December 31.
Before that. And as long as there's been a good faith effort to do that. And so, you know, we're, we certainly didn't want to leave any money to forfeit back. But on the other hand, every community is dealing with this. There's, there's been a request from communities for a number of things with the CARES Act, asking Congress to extend the time beyond the 30th of December. We're not out of this by a long shot.
Right.
To fund it again, to have another round of stimulus money for CARES. We've gotten no signal that they're going to do that. I think the, you know, the trouble is that, you know, we've been told by our advisors in the state to use the money because there's no guarantee that you're going to get either an extension or to get more money. But we all know that where we are, where people are in the state, in the country, we are in desperate need of assistance. You know, the state and the local governments were not given any monies that they could use to, for shortfall of revenue.
Right.
That's been a big deal because, you know, monies were extended to small business, but not enough. But we haven't been able to utilize any money for revenue shortfall. There was a hope that they would extend that offer, and that hasn't come forward. So we are where we are, doing the best we can.
Working away.
We're working away, and we're going to, you know, try and use every dollar of the CARES money that is for the best of the people of the city of Lowell. And I do want to say, I know because there are Stop the Spread sites, which are paid for by the state, which anybody in the state can go to, I know some people from area communities have said, can we come to Lowell's site and get tested? The answer is no, because we're using our own money to pay for our own residents. And we really have to. It's, we're not getting the support. So I just want people to understand the testing that we're talking about is not a Stop the Spread site. There are other sites that they can go to. And unfortunately, we see the need, and so we're paying for our own residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just the one thing, Madam Manager, that a lot of questions I've gotten is if there's any way we can increase putting out the public notices in a couple of different languages, if we can translate it, like even just on our website, or just to make it easier for other people who speak other languages to find out some of the information?
Yeah, I think, I think we do. But I'll, you're talking about for the testing?
Well, for the testing and any information for COVID, like is there, just to make it more apparent for people who go on our website to get it translated? I think there's a way to translate it, but.
Yeah, what we typically do is we'll send it to our partners and ask them to translate it and send it forward. We have sent, for instance, the Thanksgiving Mailer. We had translated into three languages around COVID advice and instructions. So we are doing that. And I believe likewise with the time, place, and hours. But we'll make sure of that.
Okay. Thank you. Nice job with everything. Need a motion to accept and place on fire by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counsel Elliot. Votes of the city manager. Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we could probably bundle 7-1 to 7-3.
Second.
Yep. Okay, motion by Counselor Rourke, second by Counsel Elliot, bundle 7-1, 7-2, 7-3. Vote to accept donation from DCU 2020. Vote to accept and expend $5,000 Mass Attorney General's Office. Vote to accept and expend grant health deposit $100,000 COVID-19. Commission away the full reading. Motion, so, yeah, motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, second by Counsel Mercy. Roll call.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Nine years. Report Subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee, December 8, 2020. Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Couldn't see him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting tonight at 5:30. And we, the purpose was to discuss the crime statistics in the city of Lowell. It was important to do this at the end of year because normally, in a typical year, there would be separate neighborhood meetings. And each neighborhood would have a subcommittee captain go show up and discuss the, you know, the crime statistics in their particular neighborhood. But because of COVID-19, we were not able to meet on a regular basis, if at all. And present at the meeting were the two members of the Subcommittee, Counselor Rourke, Counselor Drinkwater. Also, the other counselors were also present, Counselor Conway, Counselor Samaras, Counselor Msie, Counselor Ryan Elliott. And also, Madam City Manager was also present. And one external thank you to Chief Richardson for providing the report. The report was very concise, focused mainly on the shots fired from the beginning of the year, from January 1st to the end of November, November 30th. And it compared last year, 2019, to this year, 2020. And it was surprising to me anyway, and to many people at the time of meeting, that the crime statistics, that the shot fired actually went down by about 19%. In 2019, there was a total of 59 shots fired. And in 2020, it's only 48. And the report also break down into different neighborhoods. I'm going to just read that really quickly because it's a concise report, but it's rich with information. And before I forget, if possible, Madam Manager, maybe if you could have Shauna Forsier, the neighborhood liaison, to maybe forward this report to all the neighborhood groups so they can look at this in detail. But in the meantime, the breakdown of the reports of shots fired in the acre, I'm going to just read 2020 only. In the acre, there were six, back central, three, Belvedere, one, Centralville, 11, downtown, three, Highlands, six, Lower Belvedere, three, Lower Highlands, 10, Batucatville, one, Sacred Heart, four, South Lowell, zero, against a total of 48. And obviously, the neighborhoods that are troublesome in terms of their more numbers, a five-shot, those neighborhoods of the acre, Centralville, and the Highlands and the Lower Highlands, that's still one Highlands to me, six and 10 for a total of 16. Very, very interesting statistics. A few counselors made some very good comments and good questions. Counselor Conway asked the chief to speak about the Shannon Grant, which deals with a lot of gangs-related issues and education. Tried to get, you know, tried to catch the young kids before they're going gangs, basically. Counselor Noon and Counselor Msie also mentioned about the domestic and the assault issues, different type of crime, but, you know, it's big because a lot more people stay home, a lot of mental ill issues and frustrations and so forth. Counselor Msie also complimented and extended a big thank you to all the men and women of the co-op team who are working above and beyond during these stressful times. Counselor Elliot asked the superintendent how the police officers are dealing with the COVID-19. Obviously, you know, they face the same concerns, the same worries as any of us, but also they have to deal with the public. Counselor Samaras asked the superintendent if the police department is getting enough support from resources to, you know, whether we need a new police department, for discussion purpose anyway, in the meantime. And Madam Manager also presented points and comments on the challenges to the police department, including there were 35 police officers that tested positive, as was the fire department. And also, she mentioned about the lack of resources as well. And we were able to work on the locker room, as to meet, it be updated. She pointed that out. Overall, everybody expressed a big support for our law police department, for the men and women who really are working through stressful times. And, you know, whether it's crimes or responding to traffic problems or domestic issues, they are very courteous, very professional. I don't know if the other Subcommittee members, Counselor Rourke, Counselor Drinkwater, have anything else to add. That's pretty much it, a short report. But if, again, if Shauna can forward this report to the neighborhood groups, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you. Need a motion or accept the report of progress? Oh, Madam Manager?
I just wanted to make a comment. I did mention that the, there were, at one point, 35 officers and 35 firefighters that had been out. Not all had tested positive. Some were out on quarantine because they were exposed. So it's a combination, but I just wanted to make sure people knew that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Motion to report the progress, report of progress by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Rourke.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Mercy.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mercy.
If we could take and bundle 8-28384.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Rourke to bundle 8-28384. Wire inspection, National Grid requests installation of 60 feet of 2-inch gas main to service 39 Campbell Drive. Wire inspector, National Grid requests installation of 50 feet of 2-inch gas main to service 106 Gilmore Street. Wire inspector, National Grid requests installation of underground electrical conduit on Appleton Street for service at 193 Appleton Street. Need a motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by Counsel Mercy, a second by Counsel Noon.
That's it.
Nine petition. Nine-one, claim property damage. Need a motion to refer to Law Department for reporting recommendation by Counsel Chow, second by Counsel Noon. Nine-two.
Can we bundle 9.2 to 9.4, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, okay. Motion to bundle 9.2, 9.3, 9.4. Yep, by Counsel. Sure, okay. Motion to bundle 9.2, 9.3, 9.4. Yep, by Council Noon, second by Council Drinkwater. 9.2, National Grid requests installation of 24 feet of underground electrical conduit at Bridge Street at Mass Mills Drive. National Grid, Verizon, New England requests installation of two jointly owned utility poles at Bonham Avenue and Elaine Street. Verizon requests permission to install J O pole at 190 Batman Road. I'll refer to public hearing December 22nd, 2020 at 7:00 P. M. Yeah, by Council Rourke, second by Council Mercier. Motions. 10-1, Council Samaras requests City Manager have proper department conduct a study and review to address the concerns causing serious traffic issues for Wentworth Avenue.
Second.
Sure, second by Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion basically speaks for itself, but, you know, some neighbors have spoken to me regarding Wentworth Ave. As you, I think you're all aware, Wentworth Ave is a major cut through, especially from Boylston Street, South Lowell, right to Andover Street, or the other way around, Andover Street to Boylston Street or Rogers Street. And especially this past summer, I think a lot of us, you know, will walk the area out there walking. Trucks are coming through, but the thing is, there's just many more trucks than I think should be in a neighborhood like Wentworth Avenue. And they don't necessarily say slow down. I find many specialty constructions, trucks, and those type of vehicles exceeding the speed limit. And I just would like to see some type of study done on Wentworth Avenue to see what steps can be taken to lessen some of the problems that do occur for the neighbors on Wentworth Avenue. Thank you.
There's a registered speaker, Brian Mead.
Brian, if you're there.
Yeah, that's him. He said, Brian Mead.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yep, now we can.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate the motion by Council Samaras. I grew up in Wentworth Ave, I live a street over. And, sorry, I'm hearing the feedback. So I'm on Wentworth Ave a lot, and my parents still live there, my cousin lives there, and obviously, I drive on Wentworth Ave, I walk on Wentworth Ave. And the real issue is speed. It's always been just a high-speed street for as long as I can remember. And I think the reason is because it's overly wide and it's straight, so people just kind of bomb up and down Wentworth Ave. So I think the city has done a great job in the neighborhood recently with putting in new sidewalks on Birch and Sycamore and Famon Street. And especially on Famon Street, I noticed they put a grassy strip in between the curb and the sidewalk, kind of narrowing Famon Street. So I'm wondering if the city could, as it puts new sidewalks, sidewalks in on Wentworth Ave, kind of narrow Wentworth Ave a little bit on each side, putting that grassy strip in there, so to, in essence, slow the cars down. And then if you had that grassy strip, you can maybe plant some trees, which is also a visual cue for people to slow down when they see trees. So, you know, signs, signs don't work. You can't put a cop there 24/7, you know, ticketing people. And it's just, it's just too wide of a street, I'd say. So if the city could consider that as they look to put in new sidewalks on Wentworth Ave, maybe just kind of narrow the streets, it could kind of help, you know, fix the issue of speeding cars on Wentworth Ave. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are those in favor of the motion, say aye. Sure. Council Samaras, you all set?
Yes, thank you very much.
10-2, Council Mercier requests City Manager provide a report regarding safety at our school buildings, such as inspections of H V A C unit, air quality, and all that has been done to improve the health and safety of our school buildings. Seconded by Council Rourke. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a very relevant motion. It more or less speaks for itself, but there are concerns by parents, as well as some students, to see what work has been done so far. I know the manager gave us a detailed report of what would be going on. I don't recall hearing any more about it, so I just want to know what the city has been doing to work towards that goal. So on behalf of our students, we have been asking for inspection reports, and that's what I'm trying to do here right now, and what steps have, has the city taken to ensure that the health of our school buildings is intact. I know we did work on H V A C, but have we stopped? And I want to know if the state can add any more money, have they not? They have not. Well, I think it's our responsibility. We are the city council, and we are the owners of those buildings. And so I'm asking, on behalf of the students and parents, where do we sit so far with the report for the H V A C, the air quality, in case they go back? I'd like to know.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
I may have misspoken. Of course, the state has been with the accelerated repair program, funding that. That was $14 million, of which they paid 80%. And we are just wrapping up all of those projects, many of which were brand-new heating H V A C system in six of our schools. So I, but in terms of, you know,
More.
ongoing, right. So, but we'll get that report.
I know they've helped us. I'm just asking, are they going to contribute anymore, do you think?
There's a, there is a big request out there from communities for the state.
No doubt.
But we'll get you the report as to all that we're doing.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within that report, Madam Manager, can we find out what's going on with the testing with Lowell schools, to see if they've gotten involved in that yet? I know yourself, Madam Manager, and the city has done a great job of getting free testing for Lowell residents. I know that the school program being offered that Lowell is not a part of yet, for some reason, has free testing for students and for teachers. You know, and I know a lot of our teachers don't live in the city, so this would be beneficial for them to be able to get tested when they need to. So just, if I can be part of the report, that'd be great.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I did have a conversation today about trying to get the school testing back activated. It's available. I did talk to D P H. So the Abbott Binax Now 15-minute test is what they're making available to schools. There's a number of steps, but, you know, whether it's for the students there now, or the ones that are going to be coming back in, it's a really important thing to have in place. So, but I spoke with our Health Department, and they've been in touch with D P H as far as what the steps are.
So as far as the state's concerned, we'll be in for the test?
Well, I will talk to the superintendent. It was probably a half hour before this meeting, but I wanted to make sure that these tests are actually available, that they can still be obtained. And so, without getting too bogged down in the technicalities, there are, we have the application from the state, and they do have plenty of tests still available for other jurisdictions. So we'll just need to go through the process.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's on the agenda tomorrow to be talked about also at the school committee mailing. So they're trying to bring it back or start it up. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
10-3, Council Conway requests City Manager meet with Lowell Public Health Department, Center for Disease Control, Commonwealth Department of Public Health, and all other medical partners to give updates and strategies for the second wave increase of COVID-19 cases spreading throughout our city. Seconded by
Second.
Sure, Council Samaras. Council Conway? And we have a registered speaker on this also. Did you want to go first?
Thank you. Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, good evening.
All right, that's your registered speaker, Dave. We'll go, let him go first. Who's the speaker?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Great. Can everyone hear me well? Thumbs up?
Sure. Just state your name and address from the record. Thanks, Mr.
Okay. Good evening, City Manager Donahue, Mayor Leahy, City Council. My name is Bobby Tubioli of Middle Street in downtown. I'm calling to speak in favor of Councilor Conway's motion. Everyone in this body is keenly aware of the state that our community is in with respect to COVID-19. So it's a good motion and endeavors to ensure that we're looking at all the strategies and solutions to help address and/or mitigate the rise in cases and hospitalizations we're seeing. In looking at the recommended groups to be sought out to discuss strategies, I noticed that nonprofits and other community-based organizations were not included. I respectfully ask that you consider including these groups in the discussion. I believe this might have been an honest oversight, but in the spirit of intentionality, I think it's critical that these conversations and partnerships be as inclusive and representative of the diversity of our city. I understand from conversations on the floor this past spring, there were many initial unknowns in this battle against COVID-19, and the stated focus then was on travel history. Then newly hired Director Joanne Belanger mentioned using a citywide approach to, with respect to COVID-19, that doesn't single out specific groups. She stated then, we value everybody and treat everyone the same. I believe the racial data that we've been receiving since June with respect to our communities of color have proven that we should be having deeper conversations about equity, not necessarily equality. Yes, it's critical to value everyone, but from a public health perspective, we're not all the same. The data that was ultimately released within a week of that spring city council meeting substantiated the community's concerns that African-Americans, Hispanics, and Asians were disproportionately affected by COVID-19. This is not conjecture. We know the facts. And over the past week, the CDC's new COVID-19 numbers show Black Americans and other people of color dying at higher rates than previously reported. I don't think anyone here in the community is expecting overnight results. We do need consistent and open communication and dialogue on issues that are basically life and death for so many of us. In the spring, Councilor Chow called on the city to partner with nonprofits and community-based organizations. So I and many others are wondering if we will see a partnership that centers a strategy around diversity and multiculturalism of our city. I think it's important to have honest conversations about where marks have been missed with respect to our communities of color, and what needs to be done to ensure that the city has our back. I appreciate Councilor Chow's perspective then and now. Thank you, Councilor Conway, for making this motion. And the community is looking forward to seeing the outcome of this strategy session when the city convenes with key stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank the contributor to this, to this motion. Going back to February, February 25th, I put a motion on, and the motion was to ask the City Manager to meet with the Public Health, CDC, and other medical groups to present a report to the City Council on steps that we were taking to ensure the community was safe and prepared for this, for this coronavirus that was coming up. And I think that, I know I did get some type of pushback, where people thought that it really wasn't something that was important at that point, or really wasn't a real situation. And I see that within about, oh, I'd say, three or four weeks, we had our first case in Lowell, and that was in March 15th, we had our first case. And as we all know, without going through the history here, we, the numbers started to move up, and we were getting reports from the City Manager, and the City Manager was obviously meeting with a number of different groups of people to try to deal with this situation. But as we, again, we all know that those numbers really rose to such a point that the graph, when I was graphing them out, it was going up straight up. And we certainly did, we made sure that we were using masks, we were distancing, washing our hands and so forth. We find that the numbers started to come down. The problem that we are faced with, as in any of these epidemics, of the, of the second wave that takes place. Now, if you take a look at John Hopkins Medical Center, and they're one of the leaders in the, in the country, they made it very simple. And that is, you know, what causes a spike in the coronavirus cases? It's human behavior is, is, is the key. Because what ends up happening is we relax. And that, I think, has taken place. We've seen it. And tonight, we just, the City Manager talked about some of the cases, and going up to 193 cases, 151, and that we're approaching right now almost 8,000 cases in the city of Lowell. And that is, that is absolutely unacceptable. It's something that, I know the City Manager, and I know her team is sitting down, and we are working, they are working very, very hard, and we are keeping our fingers crossed with the vaccination that will be coming forward. But I think with the, it certainly has been reported with Thanksgiving and Christmas, I think we're going to see those numbers increase even further. So that's why I put this motion on, just to kind of put things in chronological order, and to let the public know, and to let us know, exactly what we are doing to try to curb this, and to try to mitigate the uptick in the, in the virus. And I think that, you know, some of the things that have come up, we've talked about the staffing, and the City Manager mentioned about in the police department, the fire department, that a number of people have, have been quarantined. And I think that's where I'd like to see what is, what is the plan going forward, depending on how many of the policemen or the firemen are going to be out, so that we make sure that we have the city as safe as we possibly can. So again, this here, I think it's, it's a lot of the information that we've talked about tonight, I think was extremely important. I think it's important that we get that down in a report and let the public know in detail what we're doing. So again, I look forward to the report, and I know the continued efforts that the City Manager and the team are working on. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Oh, Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good motion by Councilor Conway. It's very similar to my motion a couple months ago, when we asked for a report for a plan for the second wave of COVID. But things have changed even within just one month. And I think the key word in this motion is strategies. Instead of having a report of what's happening or what's going to happen as other cities have plans for, I think it's important maybe to approach this report, this plan from a strategic point of view. And I want to thank the registered speaker, Bobby Tubioli, for tying this motion and bringing back the nonprofit organization back, back into the picture. back the nonprofit organization back, back into the picture, because when you talk about strategies, how to deal with a second wave, you do have to look at, at different strategies for different ethnic groups, even different neighborhoods, because, you know, really, our, our city neighborhoods, each neighborhood has its own characteristics, its own demographic as well, so, and with many of the nonprofits in our city dealing with the, the population that we risk the most, the most vulnerable population, the minorities and the people of color, so I do think it's important to include what strategies the nonprofits have or can contribute to the overall plan from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know that when Counselor Conway made this motion, it was not made in a, any type of negative connotation or, or, you know, or, or feel, you know, when it was made, and, and, you know, sure, and I support it, and that's, that's fine, but, you know, what the city has done since early in the spring, up until tonight, every step of the way, every meeting we have, the manager gives a detailed, lengthy explanation of what's going on, you get the, you know, the, the reports every Friday that is broken down by neighborhood, by ethnicity, of who, how was tested positive, who's testing positive, the nonprofits have been involved every step of the way, you know, whether it be with the school system, or the amount of emails we have received that has led to the manager of using CARESAC money to not only put a testing facility at Colley Stadium, but now we're doing it every day of the week over at Showcase Cinema again, and that's on the city's dime, that's not through any, you know, federal, you know, partnership with, with a private company that was put in place, you know, months ago. And, and again, you know, and I, I know where Counselor Conway is, is coming from this, and, and I just hope that it's not looked at as a negative for what the city and the city manager and her team are doing, and I, I'm going to guess that the manager meets with the, the public health department every day, talks to Lowell General Hospital every day, speaks to the state on, on a daily basis, if not twice a day, you know, to look at what the city has done, anything less than every single thing it can do, you know, I, I think is, is, is not right, and, and this motion belongs on the agenda every single meeting, I'm glad it's here tonight, you know, and I'm sure the manager can give us a report right now on this, but, you know, it being 9:30, you know, we'll wait a couple of weeks, but, you know, I think we talked about tonight, what's going on, how we're dealing with it, the amount of testing, you know, go, go see other cities that are doing the testing that we are doing currently, that's, you know, it's just not the case, right, so, free as well. So, you know, obviously, so support the motion, and I know where Counselor Conway is coming with this, but, you know, I just don't want it to be looked at as, as a negative reflection on what the city or the administration has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, there's absolutely any negative in that, in that, in the motion at all. The fact is that I know the city manager and the team are working very hard, but I also know that with this virus, we have seen that there is a shifting that goes on a daily basis, and, and it's, and it's scary, it really is, so I think that what, you know, again, that when, when Counselor Chow just said, the strategies going forward, as time goes on, I mean, we have seen that each week there is something different that pops up, another issue, another problem that we might, we, we might encounter, and that's what we're talking about going forward with the strategies, and I think it's just a matter of, of keeping everyone entombed to what, what is happening, the city, the city itself, and I realize the city manager is doing that, too. I, I understand that, so, again, this is not, this is not a negative on the city manager and their team, I think that they've done an absolutely incredible, an incredible job, and a very difficult job to try to, you know, to try to deal with the changes, the negative changes that have taken place with this virus, so, again, and I, this, this report, what I'm asking for, is that, you know, it, it will be shifting as time goes on. We might be looking at two months down the road, or six weeks down the road, looking at a completely different report on how we're doing things and the strategy. So, again, I, I think the city manager and her team has done an excellent job in the area. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 10-4, Counselor Elliott, request auditor and clerk oversight personnel subcommittee meet regarding evaluation of city manager, city auditor, and city clerk, seconded by Counselor Noon. Counselor Elliott?
I'm just going to amend my motion at some point, I, I think it's important for, I think it's the ordinance that we have the city manager, the auditor, and the clerk just present their goals, accomplishments, et cetera, maybe to the full, full council. I initially suggested the subcommittee, but I, I think we all have to evaluate, so motion speaks for itself.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You know, I, I don't know if we want to do a special meeting and do all three in one evening, it, it may make some sense, I just think it's important, again, for, for us to provide feedback, to get feedback, et cetera, so, just a thought, if we wanted to do another.
Do you have a timeline when?
No, I, I, I think would also be helpful is what is the process, I know we get the clerk's submission, and in order for there to be any adjustment anywhere, we have to do it anyway, I think it's, it's part of the ordinance, so, I think we should do it annually, so, no timeframe, I know we're up against, we only have a couple of meetings left before the end of the year, so, we can do it Zoom if that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, we can poll the council and see if there's a, a date that works over the next couple of weeks and.
Right. I know we got evaluation criteria for the clerk, so maybe Madam Auditor and Madam Manager, I forget what we used the last time, but.
Yeah, we, we have some forms here that were used the last time that we can pass out.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Counsel, 10-6, Counselor Rourke, request city manager provide an update from Mast dot regarding the Rourke Bridge design, seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, be very quick, so tomorrow night is the, is Mast DOT doing a Zoom meeting, I believe at 7:00 PM, for the, the options and what's going on, what's the latest with the, with the Rourke Bridge, so, when that's done, hopefully we can come back, and with the council, the same person from DOT can come here with a quick presentation, I know probably more people are going to tune into this, to a city council meeting than, than a presentation by the states, and I'm sure it'll be very similar, so, if we just have that done at the next meeting, I know there are three plans in place that they're looking at, and once we get the city's perspective, the neighborhood's perspective, the councils, we take it back to the, to DMCOG, and they send a letter as well saying what is the most supportive option for, for the Rourke Bridge. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to, we do have the notice from Mast dot, so it is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30, and the way people can watch this, it is a Zoom meeting, they go to www.mast.gov/RourkeBridgeReplacementProject, so they can log online and watch the presentation, and we'll invite Mast dot or a representative to come here to, to give the presentation regarding the, the options that are being considered. But this is the public hearing, if people want to tune in.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
I think that it's important to get this update, but I'm going to join tomorrow night, quite frankly, because not only do we need an update on the, the progress, but we also need an update on the resurfacing of that bridge. It's, it's, it's almost getting to the point where it's, it's a skating rink again, because the surface is chipped and it's worn, and I'd say 75%, so, I, I know that's an expensive project that the state has to do, but this bridge isn't coming tomorrow, so, I just think, Madam Manager, if, if and when they come here, that could be part of sort of an update, I know it's inspected, but it's also, all of those plates are now virtually have no surface on them. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. 10-7, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager have law department draft an ordinance relative to responsible contracting and community benefits that would establish goals for the hiring of Lowell residents, women, people of color, and veterans on city construction projects, and those receiving tax increment financing relief granted by the city. Said ordinance would have also require contractors to participate in a bona fide apprentice training program to establish career pathways and meet stated goals. Seconded by Counselor Elliott?
There is a registered speaker here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Want the speaker to go first, or?
Uh, yes, let the speaker go first.
Okay. Vivian El Mayo? Get on mute.
Okay, good evening all. Thank you for having me here. Good evening, Mr. Mayo, and members of the City of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in the support of this motion. My name is Vivian El Mayo, and I live at 110 Seneca Street. I am a member of the Front Calvert's Local Union 2168, which is part of the carpenters' union. I am grateful for the opportunity that I had to learn this trade through the union apprenticeship program, and I want as many people as possible to have the same opportunity as well. I am proud of my union that formed a group called Sisters in the Brotherhood to recruit more women into the carpentry trade. Today, more than 10% of the union apprenticeships are women, compared to 3% of non-union apprenticeships. There is no question that women can have a great career in the trades, and there are many of us out there ready to work. I know that there will be a lot of work happening Lowell in the coming years, and as a Lowell resident, I hope to be part of that. Putting these goals in place will give me and a fair chance to go to work with my, in my city, and create opportunities for others just like me. And beside of all of the things that I just said, I am in, in the trade for the last five years, I did, went through to the apprenticeship program, and that was a life-changing for me. They do offer training, they do offer a lot of information regarding safety, and being in the trades, safety, especially at the moment that we're living right now, it's more than ever very important. People, when they are educated and trained, I believe they offer better workforce, and that will bring a lot of goods for Lowell. So, putting these goals in place will give me, like I said, this fair chance, and I hope that the council will vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Vivian, the registered speaker. You know, the reason I filed this motion is that if you go and walk a construction job site today, you'll notice a couple different things. One is that it, it skews to be more white and significantly more male than the general population, and especially so in a city with a diversity like, like Lowell, and there are many reasons that contribute to that, but, but nothing so intractable that we can't make construction job sites look just like the community that, that they're located in, and if you walk through the parking lot oftentimes on a construction job site, you're going to, especially here in northeastern Massachusetts, you're going to see a lot of New Hampshire license plates, and I have absolutely nothing against those who drive across New Hampshire's southern border to go to work each day, or those who come from surrounding towns, for that matter, but I do feel that when it's our tax dollars at work, when this Lowell taxpayer is funding those paychecks, it's much better if those checks can go and support Lowell families and get spent right here in the city of Lowell at our, our own local businesses, so, that's maximizing economic development, and that's what this motion is about, just making sure that our investments have a reinforcing effect on our local economy, and at the same time promoting the, the gender and racial equity that's been so much at the forefront of our minds, especially in recent months, so, you know, saying putting local people to work is good isn't exactly, you know, complex economics, and even with strong goals, women and people of color will still be underrepresented on job sites, so, you know, we're not exactly talking about radical goals here in terms of gender and racial equity, you know, so it's fair to ask, why isn't this just run-of-the-mill policy in every, every city in America, and, you know, while every goal, I believe, as mentioned in this motion, is definitely achievable as a matter of policy, and there are working examples of that in cities throughout the Commonwealth, it has been made extremely difficult and complex to put these policies in place due to legal challenges that have been brought forward by contractors and contractor associations, who are put at a competitive disadvantage when municipalities decide to prioritize the interests of their own residents, and I, I don't believe that we can let the threat, though, of contractors, whose, whose first is, interest isn't the city of Lowell, to stop us from standing up for our own residents, so, you know, we have the benefit here of following the lead of other municipalities who have successfully implemented these responsible contracting policies already, and, you know, to be clear, this policy proposed in the motion is not envisioned to apply to every single municipal project, if we're talking about a small job here that, you know, requires a small crew, few workers, you know, excavation job, for example, it may not be realistic to apply each and every one of these goals to that, but, you know, so there needs to be some sort of cost threshold, or, or, you know, something to establish that, and, you know, should this motion pass, and I hope it does, we'll leave it to the, the law department to figure out what's been applied elsewhere in terms of that, but, you know, much of this motion is about the who, you know, who it is that we want to see on our local job sites, Lowell residents, women, people of color, veterans, but the, you know, part of this is about the how, right, you can create the, the greatest goals in the world, but if you don't have the trained and qualified workforce available to, to step into those jobs, the goals will always remain just that, so, that's why I believe it's, it's very important to make apprentice training a component of every single craft that's funded through, through Lowell taxpayer dollars, and, you know, not only are apprentice classes more diverse in terms of race and gender than the construction industry as a whole, they grow more so every year, and not only do union apprenticeship programs partner with veterans organizations that provide quality careers for those returning from service, but, you know, they're an entryway into not just a job, but a family-sustaining career for so many people in our community today, and they'll ensure that as Lowell continues to build and improve our public infrastructure in the coming years, that, you know, we can make sure these projects are completed while supporting, you know, the families here in Lowell, and, and putting paychecks right back into the, the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marissa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion by Counselor Drinkwater brings up the fact to me that when we were discussing the renovation work of Lowell High School, that we had asked for this, we were more or less promised that we will try to do what you say as far as, I think they would have given us the world at that point, but they said they'd have a student apprentice program that hired minorities, a certain portion of unions, certain portion of the population that reflected the, the color, the, the existence of the population here, so I don't know that if we could have a report as to, and I'm sure Lowell High School has been, you know, doing renovation work, doing, no, that it didn't start yet?
No, well, just the, just the demolition, the construction hasn't started, but those are in the contract, but we'll get your report on that.
Okay, thank you so much, and I think this is an excellent motion.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Drinkwater. This is a very important motion because, as you, everyone knows that the state has a goal in term of a number of percentage of women, a percentage of minority. Lowell should have that too. Lowell should have Lowell goal. Lowell should thinking about this ordinance is important so that, you know, we hire local. We hire women, minority, veteran, local. Because they tend to, whatever they make, they tend to, you know, spend locally, and certainly going to help local economy. With that said, I think the apprenticeship training is crucial in term of, you know, bringing those who have no skill into a skill set job like carpenter, plumbing, electrician, and so on. So, you know, we need to put together a, again, you know, let's get a language for this ordinance back in the law department, and let's get it passed. You know, the high school job is starting. So, project like high school, if we have local resident working in that school, they feel invited. They're part of, you know, like, look, you know, I'm part of building this school, proud to be Lowellian. So, great motion, and I'm looking forward for, you know, to get the language from the law department for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, it's a good motion, and the motion speaks to a lot of the issues that have been raised today in today's society. But to the city manager, the previous city council, especially in the high school, we asked for all of those steps to be implemented with suffered construction. At the time, I don't think we had chosen suffered at the time, but whoever was going to be the builder of the project would accept these goals. So I just want to make sure that there's no confusion, and that we give this, we asked the law department, you know, I think the law department was asked their opinion on what we could do or what we can't do, what we can offer. But I know, Madam Manager, that you negotiated with the construction company. So we don't confuse the issue, I'd just like to see a report on what we've asked for, what we requested, and what this motion, if this motion speaks to anything that has not been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great motion, and I support this motion on its merit, even though the makeup motion mentioned there might be legal hurdles and so forth, and as a couple counselors mentioned before, in relation to the Lowell High School project, we see it's legal and so forth. I also look at this motion not just relevant, not just related to the Lowell High School project. This is going forward and beyond one particular project. This is any construction project in the city Lowell, and it's important to have this type of ordinance or understanding in place for future projects. And, you know, we always talk about having the residents support local businesses, support local, shop local, but I also think we should support our local residents, and that's what this motion is speaking to. We need to support our residents. We need to make sure that they can make a decent living and continue to live in our city. As you know, many of the real estate properties are getting more expensive, and if our old residents cannot afford these jobs, basically, they could be forced to other cities where the rents or the cost of living might be lower, or they might be pushed to homelessness and so forth. So it's important to have good quality jobs for our residents in the city. You know, we're talking about Lowell residents, talking about women, talking about people of color. So I think it's a great motion. It's good to have a place for future construction projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
It's a good motion. I support it 100%. Roll call.
Roll call. Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot? Yes. Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yeah.
Counsel Conway?
Yeah.
Nine yeas. Thank you. Last motion tonight, Counsel Drinkwater, request city council vote to convey opposition to the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board regarding proposed service cuts to the commuter rail service. Seconded by Counsel Noon, Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many may have heard, the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board had proposed some pretty steep cuts to MBTA service for the upcoming budget year for the T. And while those cuts run the gamut from all the T services, from, you know, subway to bus to ferry, the one that I think would really deeply impact the city and our residents here is cuts to the commuter rail, which the originally proposed cuts, proposed to cut 35% of service from the commuter rail, specifically all weekend service and all trips after 9:00 p.m. Obviously, at the end of the commuter rail, we have many residents here in the city who use it to commute to work. And I'll point out one group in particular who I think are, would be disproportionately impacted by these cuts to commuter rail service, and that's healthcare workers. As we all know, you know, healthcare is a 24/7 industry. We have many Lowell residents here who work in Boston hospitals, you know, Mass General right at the end of the commuter rail, near North Station, or the hospital area, medical area in Boston, where if they were to drive in, they'd be, you know, paying up to, you know, $50, $60, $70 a day to park. So the commuter rail helps them get into work at, you know, a much more, you know, less expensive rate, and they're oftentimes, you know, going into night shifts, coming back from, you know, shifts late at night on the weekends. So this custom service would have a serious impact on many people, you know, healthcare, other industries, you know, cleaning, security, that we have people that go into Boston for those jobs. So, you know, many cities and towns are pushing back on these cuts. In fact, the MBTA Advisory Board, which is the advisory board that represents all cities and towns within the MBTA and commuter rail service area, actually came out with a report that questioned the budget projections that the T came out with for next year, projecting them to be much less severe, and is asking the T to reconsider these cuts. They're scheduled to meet on December 14th. The control board actually just came out, or the director of the MBTA just came out yesterday and said that they will push off decisions on some of these service cuts, after hearing a lot from many different communities, and expecting ridership to actually increase with the oncoming vaccines. So it's not clear which service cuts they'll be reconsidering or pushing off decisions on, but I do feel it's important that this council weigh in specifically, and, you know, against any cuts to commuter rail service, given how important it is to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I agree with the, again, the concept of the motion, but the MBTA cannot sustain itself the way that it's run. You know, it goes through money worse than any other organization, you know, in the state. I think what we should do as a council and as a city is say how important it is for Lowell residents to have, you know, service as much as possible going forward, you know, what our numbers are, or what, you know, type of workers are in the city that they utilize, you know, the public transportation. I think that would go further than just a blanket no across the board, just saying the Lowell City Council for no on any service cuts, because, again, cuts are coming. You know, and whether that is going to affect Lowell, or it's going to affect Winchester, or it's going to affect Concord, I think, you know, a more prudent move would be to state how important public transportation, you know, the rail is for the city of Lowell. You know, it's just by opinion, because, you know, anybody that looks at what, you know, the MBTA and, you know, the spending that goes on there, you know, whatever we vote, cuts are going to happen somewhere or someplace, as Counsel Drinkwater said. But I think that if we have a detailed memorandum of what, you know, it means to the city of Lowell, to its residents, to its workers, I think we'd go much further than just, you know, a blanket no. Thank you.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yeah, I would make that in form of a substitute motion, please.
Second.
Do you want to speak again?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I have to oppose the substitute motion. I mean, the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board meets on December 14th, on Monday, to consider a range of cuts. I mean, I limited this motion intentionally to commuter rail service because that's what impacts the city. I didn't, you know, necessarily want to ask everyone here to weigh in on, you know, on subway and bus service that is not used by residents of the city. So I feel where, you know, it's appropriate for us to weigh in would be, you know, on specifically the commuter rail service. And again, we're talking about, you know, eliminating all weekend service and after 9:00 p.m. You can't really hedge on that. If you're a worker who uses those services to commute in the city at those times, those cuts drastically impact you. So, you know, I support the motion as it was drafted, and, you know, so I have to ask, you know, I won't be supporting the substitute motion and hope that we can vote on the underlying.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Again, you know, there's no mention of the city of Lowell in the original motion, okay? You know, we're a Lowell City Council, we're not a Massachusetts State Council, we're not the state reps, we're not, you know, state senators. If we really want to make a difference about the people, the employees of Lowell, you know, I would go with the substitute motion. You know, otherwise, it just looks like a, you know, a state issue that's trying to be talked about at the municipal level. So I'll let the substitute motion go for the, ask for a vote on that, please.
Roll call.
Yep. Just Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a comment on Counsel Drinkwater's motion first, if possible, and I want to support that motion. I understand, again, many times the comments by Counsel Rourke, I take that to heart in the terms that we need to focus on what's important to Lowell, what's important to our city. But I feel that this motion, once dealing with commuter rail, it is affecting our city, it is affecting our Lowell residents, because many of our Lowell residents depend on the commuter rail to commute to other towns, to Boston, to other towns along the way to Boston. And many of them, you know, they have work, maybe find work in other towns or in Boston. They really depend on the commuter rail, on the train, basically, to get to work and come back to work. I think, you know, cutting services in the commuter rail will affect some of Lowell residents. So I think it's important for us, you know, I understand Counsel Rourke's point, there's not much we can do as municipal councilors, but like many other motions that came before in support of resolutions at a state level, what have you, our voices can be heard across the state. And if you could voice our support for this motion, basically not to support their cuts, it might have an impact. Because remember that, you know, what makes Lowell great is that we have a commuter rail. It's Lowell's a gateway city, and what makes it instrumental to be a gateway city is to have the commuter rail. And you see that many people from other towns and cities, they moved to Lowell, just because we have a very, very good commuter rail system. You know, I think that's been the most important point out, points that I want to make too, but might not be relevant right now. I want to say, you know, we've been talking about, you know, for decades and decades, trying to promote our public transportation, you know, for the sake of environment, for the sake of the climate. And if we stop cutting the services now, you know, we're rolling back, you know, decades of trying to promote our public transportation. I would support, if we go with this motion, I would support Counsel Drinkwater's motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Counsel Elliot just moved to question. I'm going to be short on this. I'm going to be short on this, right? So we want to take a stand. We want to take a stand telling our residents, those that took the commuter rail, and some of those that moved from Boston and purchased property here in Lowell, that we support them. We do not want to see this cut. Understand, that fiscal issues and whatnot, but, you know, they meet on the 14th. And so we just want to send a message, they may not listen, but at least we stand for the commuter people in the city of Lowell.
Okay, thank you. Vote, roll call on the substitute motion. Counsel Drinkwater?
No.
Counsel Elliot? Yes. Mayor Leahy? No. Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
No.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
No.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Five yeas. Substitute motion passes. You don't go back to the other one. Substitute motion. All right. Announcement? Sure, Counsel.
We had a notice on our desk regarding the parking garage grand opening, Madam Manager. I think this is very exciting. Could I just ask a follow-up? When will the parking garage actually be open for business?
I think it will be that next day.
That next day, okay.
Yeah, it's being transferred this week to the city.
Okay, good. I just think that's great news for that development and that area, and here we go. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everyone about this Saturday, December 12th, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 9:80 a.m., WCAP will host the Salvation Army Radio-Thon with Warren Chow and Jerry Nutter. Stop in to the radio station at their new location, which is 61 Market Street. They're on street-level floor, easy access. Drop off a check. With the Kettles location being limited this year, and the need is greater than ever because of the pandemic and the people out of work, this year so far, so whatever you could give, and you can help families of little means have a nice Christmas for their children. 100% of the money goes to help local people. We are all pulling together and passing our blessings forward, so please help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercy. Counsel Elliot?
I know we're not meeting for a couple of weeks, and it's not an announcement, but I guess I'd ask for suspension of the rules, how the manager provide an update on a report on the HR audit that was put out to bid, and then it's come back. We're not meeting for a couple of weeks, and I know it's important to community and the city council. So I'd have to ask for suspension of the rules because it's not an announcement, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have two minutes, so just.
Second.
Take the manager one.
So just quickly, the council will recall back in July, the council had voted, we had presented for an HR report, and the motion, I believe, was Counsel Drinkwater's to ask the city to see if the, what it would cost to do an HR report, and if there were funds available, grant funds or other funds to pay for it. In order to do that, we put together a scope of services, put it out for bid. We reported back to the council that the bids came in, they were somewhere in the vicinity of $150,000, $160,000, and there wasn't grant funding to pay for it. But instead of just leaving it at that and answering the motion, we did go back to the drawing board. We tried to restructure the scope of services to make it something that may be more affordable, and with the intent to and with the intent to maybe do it in a phased way, but to get the process going. So we redid the scope of services, we redid the bid, we put it out to bid, and then I think it was maybe two weeks ago, within the past couple of weeks, we did, the bids closed and we received six proposals. Those are going through the committee process, are being scored, and we'll come up with a recommendation and also continue to look for money, but it is less money than what was originally done. So stay tuned. Hopefully, for our next meeting, we'll have a report for you on it.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Just a quick question, Madam Manager. I know a ton of nonprofits have spoken out about this multiple times in the paper, the radio, whatnot, social media. Has any nonprofit offered assistance with the funding?
The Greater Lowell Community Foundation had, early on, said that they would participate in some form. We were trying to get a handle, not that they were going to pay $160,000, but, so we were trying to get a handle on what that cost was. I believe in my conversations with Jay Linehan, there's still an interest on behalf of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation to make some contribution.
I mean, the city has partnered with nonprofits over, you know, decades to help them out, right? So I'm sure, you know, a few could step up to help for the cost. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Mercia to stay, I mean, adjourn. Seconded by Counselor. Thank you.
And everyone jumps in, and we, almost every meeting, there's this one moment where we go, because someone who's the last person you would expect to jump into that particular conversation will make the most brilliant comment because of something in their background that we don't even know about. So they're a lot of fun, we laugh a lot, people walk away saying they're the most, you know, valuable hour, hour and a half.